I'd like to welcome you to our council meeting this Thursday, November the 18th, 2021. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups should designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. We thank you for participating in your city government. Please silence all electronic devices, starting with mine. With that, I'll call this meeting to order. Could we all stand together for our invocation by Pastor Jay McCag from Crossroads Baptist Church? Thank you so much for being here tonight. Please remain standing for the pledge after the invocation. Thank you.
Please join me in a word of prayer. Father, we thank you for the privilege that we have to come together. We thank you, Father, for this gift of civil government that you've given us where we have the ability to mold our futures. Father, we pray that you'll be with each council person, you'll be with each member that's here, with each member of our community that's going to speak tonight, that everything will be done rightly and in order, with your wisdom and your grace being shared. Father, give us that peace, that joy that can only come from you, Father, as we go through these times. Father, don't allow things to become contentious, Father, but give us that patience and that understanding that comes from you. Father, we love you. We thank you, Father, for the privilege we have to be here. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Have you seen it? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Here.
Councilmember Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Urban?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
And we would like to welcome our newest council member, Mr. Councilman Kobe Urban, to our dais today. First of all, we have proclamation and recognition of Ms. Tammy Madison. Tammy, would you mind coming and joining me? Whereas Tammy Madison has shared her passion for the past 15 years to help those less fortunate in our community, serving as a leader of the St. Cloud Community Food Pantry, and whereas throughout the pandemic, Tammy made changes to the food pantry operation to ensure the safety of volunteers and clients, and whereas Tammy made it a priority to ensure the food pantry continued to operate without interruption, and whereas Tammy created a more efficient distribution process, and whereas Tammy has been a great ally to numerous organizations to provide aid and resources to serve those in need to benefit the residents in our community, and whereas Tammy has fostered an amazing network of partnerships over the years, and whereas the commitment and heart of Ms. Tammy Madison has been invested in our community and it has positively impacted countless of our residents, now therefore, I, Nathan Blackwell-Mather, of St. Cloud, Florida, do hereby recognize Tammy Madison for her outstanding service and contributions to our community. And words are not sufficient to describe the investment that she has made into our community, leading the food pantry, and the beautiful team of volunteers from our community that have also rolled up their sleeves, putting serving towel across their arms to serve our community. But so much of that certainly has been due to the incredible efforts and work of this beautiful lady here. Tammy, thank you so much.
Thank you. I was born and raised in Osceola County, and I'm very proud to be part of that. Thank you for this award. It means a whole lot to me, and I couldn't have done it without the volunteers we have in our, in our community. If it wasn't for them, we would not have been able to continue as long as we have. We've been around for 34 years, and I take a lot of pride in that. And thank you, Mayor and Councilmen, for doing this for me. It really means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sure? That's a huge community effort for sure. At this, at this time, we have a presentation of the Employee of the Month by David Kestner.
And it looks like... You know, this is part of the job that I really enjoy. It's Kevin Douglas. He's Employee of the Month this month. Kevin Douglas is a driver collector of the Sol Waste Division. He's been with us for some 21 years. Kevin has seen it all from rear loader garbage trucks to the new fancy fully automated ones we see out on the roads today, and everything in between. Kevin loves to serve the public and has proven to be a valuable asset to the city and its residents. Recently, during Kevin's normal day, Kevin drove his garbage truck around the corner in front of the Walmart Neighborhood Market. He saw a van stop that was actually on fire. He pulled his vehicle across lanes to stop traffic. They grabbed the fire extinguisher on his vehicle to attempt to put the fire out. While attempting to extinguish the fire, he had to hold back the owner from trying to enter the vehicle. The fire soon took over and was out of control. Luckily, that bought just enough time for the fire department to show up and extinguish the rest of the fire. Kevin's actions helped reduce the fire from damaging the pavement and saving us thousands of dollars in repairs, but more importantly, his actions prevented the owner from possible grave danger if they had ever entered or tried to enter the vehicle. Kevin's dedicated service, values, commitment, and service to the public reflects positively on himself and the city of St. Cloud and its Sol Waste Division, and it is a great pleasure with all honor to award Kevin Douglas the Award for Employee of the Month.
Thank you. Good deal, man. Good job. Hold it. Wait up here. Keep it in the middle. Thank you.
It is my honor and privilege to recognize Lucy Lugo and Shailene Valdevia for this year's October Team Recognition Award. Normally, in the building department, we often see regular contractors and customers come into our department. These ladies take so much care to get to know our citizens and to provide such actually customer service that oftentimes these contractors and customers come back just to say hello. In one occasion, one of our customers came in and was talking about his upcoming birthday. These ladies took it upon themselves to remember his birthday, buy him a cupcake and a balloon to honor him on his special day. He came in on his birthday, and he was so overwhelmed by their gesture. This is just one example of how these ladies go above and beyond every single day to provide excellent customer service, to care for our citizens, and then to build that lasting relationship of trust, which reflects greatly on our city and our department. So can you please join me in recognizing Shailene Valdevia and Lucy Lugo?
Can you get a picture of these ladies? Y'all be coming. We have a certificate we may give.
Sorry. Yes. Thank you so much.
My birthday is on August the 27th. And I'll be dropping by your department next year.
Yes, sir. Okay, can I have permission to update the agenda? To update the agenda?
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Mayor and council members on the consent agenda, I'll be pulling item A, Resolution 2021-268-R, and we will discuss that. Also, consent agenda item C, 2021-289-R, pull for discussion. Consent agenda item D, Delta, 2021-290-R, pulled for future agenda. Item P, Papa, Resolution 221-307, pulled for future agenda. Item S, Sierra, Resolution 221-310, pulled for future agenda.
Okay, we'll make note of that. We'll come back to that in just a moment. Right up for the citizens forum.
And public hearings, item 11, Ordnance 221-68 must be read first. They're out of order. And item number nine, Ordnance 221-58 be read second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will go to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as is practical there for the person addresses the council. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak during the citizens forum? If not, then we move on to our consent agenda. We've already taken note of the items that the city manager has pulled and brought attention to. Are there any other items that the council members wish to address? I would like for us to pull for clarification, item number C. Are there any other items? If not, then we'll go to item number A for clarification.
Yes, sir. Item A, on the dais, I placed a memo from the HR director regarding that item, and the Juneteenth holiday, the actual cost was incorrect. The actual cost to the city is $31,100. Also, on the second page of that memo, it actually talks about the recommended holidays observed.
Anything else?
That's it, sir.
On that item?
Yes, sir.
Does any of the council members wish to speak for that? We come to item C. Item C talks about defining the term resident and non-resident with regard to the purchases made at Mount Pea Cemetery. I just feel like a better clarification needs to be made in that resolution where it says residents defined as an ad valorem taxpayer owning property. I would like to see it changed to say owning a domicile, a permanent place of residence within the corporate limits of St. Cloud, in which the purchaser pays ad valorem taxes to the city of St. Cloud for said property, $800 per lot or columbarium niche. The reason I feel like it needs that clarification, if you just use the term owning property, I just think it opens up the door for problems down the road and misunderstandings, and I just feel like when you use the term domiciled, it says you're residing in a property. You are actually a resident of the city, and it defines, I believe, in a clearer language what the term resident means. Councilman Matheny?
Thank you. I'm okay with that clarification. I thought this was getting pulled for another meeting based on my agenda review because I had some questions on the definition as well. Specifically, my question was, I understand the point between the resident and non-resident because the taxpayer dollars help maintain the facility, but I said, what if, you know, it's, it's the determination at the time that the plot is purchased? So I said, what if somebody has lived here their entire life, and then they go, and they're in a nursing home, and they pass, and the family goes to buy a cemetery plot? Like, they're not considered a resident because at the time of their death, you know? So I was like, should there be some kind of timeline in there? Like, if they were taxed, you know, had ad valorem tax in the city of St. Cloud for whatever number of years that, that makes that balance? I don't know. I was just thinking, like, you could potentially have a lot of people that just at the end of their life no longer are owning property, but they're a citizen of St. Cloud. So I wanted to see if we could maybe work on that language.
We can try to work on that language. I think it becomes a little difficult, however, to sort of write that into, to anticipate every scenario. Do you, do you say they, it would be difficult to set it, so are they, do you say, okay, if they were taxpayers for 20 years and now they've been in, they moved away, or they go into assisted living facility for four or five years or two years? And I think it's difficult. I understand from talking to staff about this issue that internally, it is that an individual in the scenario you're talking about would be considered a, having been considered a resident for tax and get the discounted rate under that provision because we would kind of look at their last, their last home, their last domicile before they went into a facility, and it would have been here in the city and would have done that. So that's kind of how we handle it. One of the things, remember, it's all done at the point of, at the time of sale.
Right.
So that's where, that's where it comes in, and if people plan better, obviously, and everybody doesn't always plan well, so it makes it a lot easier. But, you know, the converse of that is the way we do it now, the way it's done now is if an individual buys a cemetery plot at the time that they are a resident in the city and then they move out of the city, they still get the, they still have acquired a, you know, a plot at the discounted rate, even though at the time that they, it's used, they may not be a resident of the city. So we've tried to, tried to work with it. We could work on the language some more, but I think it's going to kind of be difficult to write it to encompass all those circumstances that you're talking about. And I guess, Mayor, to your question, though, are you, the way we've written, and this is language that's consistent throughout several of the other items that you have, like the Marina, the, now for the St. Cloud Ranch, the Ranch, and other folks where taxpayers get a, get a discounted rate to use the facility or use the asset of the city. In all those instances, it's been based on whether you are an ad valorem taxpayer, whether you live in the city or not, if you wrote taxes, you own the business, you own a piece of property, and you, and you were paying ad valorem taxes to the city, which is the dollars that are used to support these assets, you got the discount. So your suggestion is, is that they purely be tied to a resident, they actually have to be a resident in the city.
Well, I just think we, we get into the problem that if you, for example, like if you own a business and you're not really a resident, you know, does that qualify you? The interpretation we've had in other areas, like running for council, et cetera, just becomes a problem. I just think it needs to be clarified what we mean by a resident.
Well, the proposal before, the proposal before you, and that's, and that's why I was asking, proposal before you in the scenario, you just said, if you own the business and you pay taxes in the city but you live somewhere else, you would get the discounted rate under this proposal. That's the way it's written right now, because you would be considered a taxpayer, an ad valorem taxpayer. So if you want to change that and go to make it purely resident at the time that they purchase it, using language like you've suggested would be appropriate.
I have no problem with it being pulled and being discussed a little further. So would there, we've been agreeing that we just pull this and let go back to staff, and let's discuss this a little further, just to really make sure we really... On item D, would you need to address that? This is, sir, you want to just pull for future consideration?
Yes, sir.
Make sure that's clarified. Item P, you're pulling for future, for a future agenda, right?
Yes, sir.
And item S, you're pulling for a future agenda also.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Councilmember Matheny, your light is still on.
I'm sorry.
Do you have any other questions? Would anyone in the audience like to address any item that is on the consent agenda? If not, could I entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent.
Okay. Are you going to speak?
Yes, I have just...
You need to step to the microphone. You need to state your name and address for the record, please, and then fill out a form before you...
Yes.
When you finish? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Lourdes Walker. I am a citizen of Osceola County. I own a property in the county, actually, not the city of St. Cloud, but there is an item on the agenda that is included, which is the annexation of the property.
Well, ma'am, that, that's not on the consent agenda. When we get to that item, you'll, we'll be giving up. No worries.
My apologies. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You can speak to that later. Are you wanting to speak to an item on this agenda?
On the consent agenda.
On the consent agenda.
I didn't know I wanted to, but I do now. I'm Jerrym Furtick, 50 Furtick Road, St. Cloud, Florida. Good to see you all, council. I want to look at number L, please. Is this renewing, Dan? Is this your contract being renewed?
It's, it's an, actually, it's for purposes of...
Engaging on what, for $255,000?
It's the, it is an expansion of the services that our firm provides to the city. Yes.
I just wanted, you know, ask y'all, as council, have y'all looked at an in-house attorney yet? And the cost savings?
Sir, we looked at that, conducted the...
I don't think there is a cost savings.
Conducted an extensive study of that, and it was not a big cost savings. It was a big expense.
What was the difference?
That was several years ago. I can't give you those details, but it has been looked into. Do you have any other questions?
No, I just want to kind of know, so do we know how much of a difference it is for the service that you're providing? Do you know the difference?
Sir, we can't address that at this point.
Okay. Well, all I wanted to do is ask y'all.
Thank you.
Think about it. Okay?
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That has been considered in the past. Could I entertain a motion, Ms. Matheny? You have a motion now?
Yeah, a motion to approve the consent agenda except for C, D, P, and S.
Second. A. We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Brings us to public hearings. Madam Clerk, will you please read items one, two, and three?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2021-36, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of St. Cloud approximately 219 acres identified as the ranch at St. Cloud located east of Narcousie Road and south of Jones Road in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2021-37, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of park open space to approximately 219 acres identified as the ranch at St. Cloud located east of Narcousie Road and south of Jones Road, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the planning commission, recommendation, and proof of publication, applicability and effect, separability, copies on files, and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2021-38, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of open space and recreation compatible with the park open space, future land use designation change adopted by ordinance number 2021-37 for approximately 219 acres identified as the ranch at St. Cloud located east of Narcousie Road and south of Jones Road, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, filing of the planning commission recommendation, and proof of publication, separability, and effective date.
Thank you. The request before you today, the first item is...
Could you state your name, please?
Erin Sturtevant, Transportation Manager with Community Development. Is for the ranch at St. Cloud voluntary annexation. The subject properties are approximately 219 acres in size, generally located south of Jones Road and east of Narcousie Road. The subject property qualifies for annexation under Florida statute. It has an existing future land use designation of low density residential and an existing zoning of urban settlement in the county. The proposed request meets the intent for the strategic plan goals of growth management, economic development, and public service because it's a city parcel and intended to remain a park. The DRC and staff made a recommendation of approval of ordinance 2021-36 on June 1st, 2021. The planning commission recommended approval on July 20th, 2021, and the requested action from city council. You all have heard this item once before on August 12th, 2021, and this is the final hearing, and we're recommending approval of ordinance 2021-36. The next item on the agenda is the concurrent comprehensive plan amendment requesting to change the future land use map designation on approximately 219 acres of land. The request is to change the existing county future land use designation from low density residential to park open space. And we have determined that there are no adverse impacts on city facilities from the request. Here's an image of the current future land use map that shows that it's embedded with a bunch of low density residential. The proposed request meets the intent for the same strategic plan goals, and on or before July 1st, or June 1st, 2021, DRC and staff reviewed the request and recommended approval. The planning commission recommended approval on July 20th, 2021, and we transmitted to the Department of Economic Opportunity. We received no objections from that review from state agencies or DEO, and requested action is that the city council approve this based on the 16 findings in the Land Development Code, approval of an ordinance 2021-37, and to send this to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for adoption. And then the third item running concurrently is the request for a zoning map amendment. The, the request is to change the zoning from the county's urban settlement designation to the city's open space and recreation zoning designation, which is compatible with the requested park open space future land use designation. It meets the, the intent for the same three strategic plan goals, and on the same dates, DRC staff recommended approval, the planning commission recommended approval, and we are asking that the city council recommend approval. You all also heard this item on August 12th, and we would ask your approval of ordinance 2021-38. I'm here if you have any questions, and I think the Parks Department is here as well if you have questions, I think.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to any of these? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to any of these items? If not, we'll have discussion or motion by council?
Motion to approve.
Would you like to approve, make a motion for the approval of item number one for ordinance number 2021-36?
Yes, so I have an option to rearrange them?
Well, no.
Second.
Just to clarify that, can't do all three.
One second.
So I have a second. We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Askew for the adoption of ordinance number 2021-36. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number two. Do I have a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 2021-37?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Councilmember Matheny, we have a second, again, from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Can I have a motion for the adoption of item number three, ordinance number 2021-38?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Matheny.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number four. Madam Clerk?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2021-57, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, closing, vacating, and abandoning the right-of-way located east of Whistler Court and north of 10th Street, specifically described in the body of this ordinance, providing for separability, conflict, and effective date.
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Stephen White, Community Development. The project before you is the Preserve at Lakeside Abandonment of Right-of-Way. The subject site is located east of Whistler Court and north of 10th Street. The applicant is requesting abandonment of the right-of-way to construct 10 single-family residents in that area. The right-of-way is unimproved. The applicant would like the unused right-of-way to be abandoned prior to the property being platted. Osceola County did request eight feet of right-of-way along 10th Street. The applicant has agreed and will be meeting this request through the preliminary subdivision plan phase, which is indicated below with the subdivision 20-0020, and you can see north of 10th Street, they're calling out the additional eight feet to be left for Osceola County. This project meets the strategic plan goals of growth management for the City of Saint Cloud. Section 5.5.4(c) of the Land Development Code provides the guidelines for abandonments, easements, or right-of-ways. DRC recommended approval of ordinance 2021-57, and we're requesting approval of ordinance number 2021-57 with a condition of eight feet of additional right-of-way along 10th Street be dedicated to Osceola County. And I'm available for any questions, and I'm not sure if the applicant is.
Is the applicant here? Thank you. Would you like to speak to this item?
Yeah, my name is Greg Crawford. I'm with Florida Engineering Group, 5127 South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida, and I'm just here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion or motion by council. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I have a question for the applicant. So on the, the question I was going to bring up was regarding the right-of-way and if any dedication was needed to Osceola County, because I know that the right-of-way width is different across the front of this property. I couldn't tell in that graphic, is it tying in with the right-of-way width on the east and west sides of the parcel?
I believe on, actually, right now, I don't think there's anything on the east or west side that's been dedicated yet, so.
Well, but doesn't the right-of-way jog across the front of this property?
Not across the front of this property. On the south side, it's fairly, I think they're like not really parallel, so it does a little bit, but as far as across our front property, it is a solid eight foot and it's a solid line, no jogging within our property frontage.
No, I mean, if you look to the property to the left and right of your property, is this eight feet going to be consistent with the right-of-way width on those parcels? That graphic doesn't show it.
No, what I recall on it as far as coming from the east and the west is that further to the east, they do have the jog in it, but the property directly to the west of it currently does not have that jog as far as the additional, say, eight feet that's in there, and also to the west of us, it's backed down. So we'd be dedicating that now, but ultimately, the city or the county would go through and deal with any right-of-way taking that would be necessary on the other portions.
Yeah, my question is, because you're not understanding my question, can we pull up the property appraiser for this? Like, can we pull up the website and look at it?
The actual, the actual website?
The actual property appraiser website? Because my question is just, is it going to make a consistent?
Can we?
So the, the current property, front property line of this, or the south property line, is the same line on the east and west side?
That's the question I'm asking.
So they're dedicating eight more feet than what's?
Eight more feet. And then that graphic there shows a right-of-way line that's even further away than eight feet, the one, the graphic that was just up? Whatever the graphic, the page that was just up before this? Yeah, see, it says north right-of-way line.
That, that's the abandoned railroad.
Beyond that.
Yeah, it does have the north right-of-way line that's to the north of that. That was basically part of an old right-of-way, the railroad right-of-way that had been previously abandoned, per other documentation, and that's really why there's a north right-of-way line that used to be the abandoned railroad. You can see that on there, it talks about the abandoned 60-foot right-of-way. So that north right-of-way that's talked about is actually the old right-of-way that was abandoned for the railroad, and then the north right-of-way line that's down by the 10th Street, that's the current existing north right-of-way line for 10th, 10th Street, and then we're going to go ahead and dedicate an additional eight feet north of it.
And that's consistent with what Transportation and Transit says is needed?
That, that's correct.
Okay.
Do we have the other discussion? Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of?
Did we get public comment?
Yes.
Did we get public comment?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2021-57.
I have a motion from Councilmember Trace. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to items five, six, and seven.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-21, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of Saint Cloud approximately 91.8 acres identified as Pine Grove Reserve, located north of east Earl Bronson Memorial Highway and west of Pine Grove Road, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-23, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of low-density residential to approximately 91.8 acres identified as Pine Grove Reserve, located north of east Earl Bronson Memorial Highway and west of Pine Grove Road, providing and amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the planning commission, recommendation, and proof of publication, applicability, and effect, separability, copies on file, and effective date. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-24, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of planned unit development, PUD, compatible with a low-density residential future land use designation change adopted by ordinance number 2021-23, for approximately 91.8 acres identified as Pine Grove Reserve, located north of east Earl Bronson Memorial Highway and west of Pine Grove Road, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, providing for approval of the preliminary final master plan, filing of the planning commission, recommendation, and proof of publication, separability, conflicts, and effective date.
Good evening, Council. Erin Strath, Transportation Manager. The first request before you is the Pine Grove Reserve voluntary annexation request. Subject properties are approximately 91.8 acres in size and are generally located north of US 192 and west of Pine Grove Road. The subject property qualifies for annexation under Florida statutes contiguous and reasonably compact. The existing future land use designation is low-density residential in the county, and the zoning is also low-density residential. This request meets the strategic plan goals for growth management, and DRC and staff recommended approval on or before July 6th, 2021, of ordinance 2021-21. The planning commission recommended approval on October 19th, 2021, based on the 16 findings, and we are seeking your approval at this first hearing of ordinance 2021-21. The second request on the agenda is for the comprehensive plan amendment. Again, the property is 91.8 acres in size. The background is the future land use is currently low-density residential. The proposed future land use is, is low-density residential in the city. The development is compatible with the surrounding area, and an evaluation has confirmed that there's no adverse impacts on city facilities with this request. It meets the strategic plan goals for growth management, and on the same date, July 6th, 2021, staff recommended approval of ordinance 2021-23. Planning Commission made a recommendation on August 12th for approval as well, and we would ask, based on the 16 findings, for approval of ordinance 2021-23 and to transmit to the DEO for inter-agency review. And then the companion zoning request is for PUD zoning, planned unit development zoning. Again, low-density residential in the county. The current zoning is low-density residential. The proposed zoning is a residential PUD. It's compatible with the surrounding area and has no adverse impacts on city facilities. It meets the strategic plan goal for growth management. A couple of slides in your presentation today, and you have the full plan in your packet, is the preliminary and final master plan. They have chosen to bring all of the details of the final master plan forward with the, with the zoning requests. Typically, only the preliminary master plan is, is required at this level, but they have incorporated all of those details. So there's lots of, you know, parking counts and additional information in the final master plan that you have in front of you. That is the southern half of the property. It's on two pages here. This is the south side, and the top half of the little L in the large wetland at the north end of the property is shown on, on this slide. The PUD zoning details, again, it's 91.81 acres. There's 284 dwelling units proposed. There's a gross density of 3.09 dwelling units per acre. The gross residential acres, that's when you subtract the right-of-way out, is 74.68 acres, and the gross residential density is 3.8 dwelling units per acre. When you take out everything but the actual residential lots, that leaves 21.22 acres and a net residential density of 13.39 dwelling units per acre, because they have lots of open space they're saving with the rest of that land. The PUD zoning details, and the reason they're requesting the PUD is the smaller lot sizes allow for the conservation of the open space that's on the property. They have 45-foot, 52-foot, and 62-foot lot wets proposed. The minimum lot size is 4,725 square feet, and the minimum living area is 1,500 square feet, but I think their plans are much larger than that generally. They have building setbacks that are fairly standard in our code, 25-foot for the front, five-foot for the rear, five for the side, and 10-foot for the side street, and just like other residential zoning districts, they're proposing two stories and 35 feet for the height limit. They have a requirement for 20%, open space, but they have reserved 26.96 acre, or 29, 26.96% of the project as open space. They are 6.39 acres over on open space than what the Land Development Code requires for residential projects. A lot of that is because there's a large wetland at the north end of the property, which takes up 10.43 acres or percent of the site, 9.57 acres. There are some building elevations in your final master plan package that are fairly traditional for you to see at this level, but typically, they're just an example of what the applicant is wishing to do in the future, to give you an idea of what their product type may look like. In this case, when this project came forward, you all heard about this project and the two neighboring projects at a recent workshop, and in that same workshop, we brought forward some ideas for residential architectural standards that we hope to codify in the future, and our staff is currently working on. The applicants are aware of that, and they want to be vested against residential architectural standards that they're not yet aware of. So they have included some language in the ordinance that seeks to do that and kind of memorializes these elevations as approved elevation, so when they get to the permit level, they won't have to comply with codes that aren't in place today, but may be in place by the time they're actually building the houses. So there's some complexity in your ordinance in front of you about those details, investing that. When we learned that they wanted to do that, we looked at the elevations they had in the package more thoroughly, and we recommended four things remain as conditions that we felt were valuable things that would be easy to incorporate, and we made those recommendations. Those recommendations are regarding the non-monotony clause, of course, varying the housing types as you go down the street at the permit level. They have incorporated that clause into their final master plan. There's a note on the building elevation sheet now. This happened since the planning commission, they submitted a revised final master plan that captured that they're willing to comply with the non-monotony clause. The ordinance in front of you also has the non-monotony language in it now. The garages, we made a recommendation that when the garage comprises more than 50% of the front facade, remedies must be taken to reduce the visual impact of the garage mass. We have not reached a consensus on, on this being incorporated into the elevation so far, so we are recommending that this be a condition of approval, that they revise their final master plan before this comes back for you, to you, for the second hearing. So we want to ensure that we feel like minor adjustments, I mean, remedies is a fairly generic term. We feel like they can do something to meet this condition or this recommendation. The composition of the building, our residential architectural standards draft has language in it that wraps the, the treatments along the front of the building, 18 inches around the corner, so it doesn't just stop at the corner of the building, and we recommended that carry forward into this project as well. They have included language on the final master plan that says they'll do this, and there's language in the ordinance as well that says they'll comply with the composition requirement, or the recommendation of staff. The last one, the windows and doors, we've, you know, these are, we feel like they're fine, fairly minor recommendations to add these little details, and we have not received revised elevations that have done this. So we are recommending a condition of approval today, again, that they revise the final master plan before it comes back to you for the final hearing to incorporate these details, and we'd ask for your recommendation on whether or not you want to condition approval of that. So there, this is the DRC staff recommendation. This came just recently, because we just had a final seminal of their final master plan since the planning commission meeting, and there are a couple of things that we're recommending. The first bullet point, they have resolved the non-monotony and the composition elements. So the first bullet point, we are really recommending at this point, based on the latest plan we have in hand and you have in your packet, that you make, that they make the recommended changes to the building elevations to reflect the, the residential architectural standards within the preliminary master plan and final master plan, including the, the garage and windows and doors recommendations. So those are the only two remaining things that they have not yet incorporated. There is one lot on the property that does not have a 10-foot buffer. I think they have some recommended language to modify the ordinance that you have in front of you. Currently, the ordinance in front of you says there's a 10-foot buffer surrounding the property. Usually, in that area, that's where they transition the grade back down to natural grade if they have fill, and they, they're filling the property about 18 inches, is my understanding. So there's one lot that does not include a buffer. So we, the current ordinance in front of you has a 10-foot buffer requirement in it, and we were recommending that the master plan be modified to capture that in the one little lot location where it wasn't, wasn't done. They have an alternative solution, and I'll let them present that, but it is to, to incorporate a wall in lieu of that buffer, because the space is tight in that location. a wall in lieu of that buffer because the space is tight in that location. And then the last detail, we have reviewed with the final master plan, a traffic impact analysis. We reviewed it for the purpose of determining where the final master plan should have access points and how many they should have. There are still some details that we're not comfortable with in the traffic impact analysis, but those are for determining the off-site improvements, the improvements to Pine Grove Road. Typically, those improvements are incorporated into the subdivision construction plans. So we would ask a condition of approval be that we will continue the assessment of the traffic impact analysis into the preliminary subdivision and subdivision construction plan reviews. We're confident that the details they've given us so far allow us to approve the plan with the locations of access points that they have depicted, but then how long the turn lanes are, you know, those kind of things will flush out at the next level. And if you have any questions? Oh, excuse me. The Planning Commission recommendation, they saw a different final master plan they've submitted since. So they had a recommendation of approval with conditions, but there were lots more conditions. Many of those they've resolved since. And then, again, the city council requested action is for the first one, just the garage and the windows and doors recommendations, a modification to the 10-foot buffer, and the continuation of the traffic impact analysis assessment. And I think the applicants are here and have a presentation for you.
The applicant would like to address the council. Please come forward.
Your council members, my name is Jim Pratt. I'm an attorney with Byrne Foreman, 200 South Orange Avenue, 8th floor, Orlando, Florida, 32801. I represent the owner of this property, American Homes for Rent. Other representatives of the company are here with me as well tonight, and Mr. Ben Schumaker, who is overseeing this project, will be addressing you and is available to answer your questions as well. As, well, Aaron has done a good job explaining to you the nature of this project. We're requesting multiple approvals, an annexation, comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning PUD, and preliminary and final master plan approvals. The property comprises approximately 92 acres and is currently located in the county and is owned low-density residential in the county. It is adjoining in west of Pine Grove Road and adjoining and east of the new school district acquisition. The process that has brought us here actually began in 2019. A previous owner petitioned Osceola County for a preliminary subdivision plan approval, and that was approved after a lengthy process in July of 2020. That preliminary subdivision plan contemplated a development over two phases, consisting of 94, 45-foot lots, 116, 52-foot lots, three 104-foot lots, 74 duplexes, and 28 side-entry residences, for a total of 315 residential lots. We're going low-tech tonight. That, my inclination is to blame the technical skills of my assistant over here. He mastered the overhead projector in grade school, and so that simplifies the process for him. The property, after the county approved the preliminary subdivision plan, was purchased by American Homes for Rent, the current owner. And we were aware at the time that we could annex into the city, and city staff confirmed, and have the county approvals transfer over, carry over into the city annexation. But in conversations among our consultants and also with city staff, we felt like we could enhance the plan for this project. As Aaron explained, those enhancements resulted in a reduction in the total number of lots of 9.8%. That's 284 lots instead of 315. And we eliminated all of the 35-foot duplex lots. We increased the size of the perimeter lots from 52 feet to 62 feet. And we replaced the three 104-foot perimeter lots with common area. We, this has been a lengthy process, and unfortunately, our efforts and staff's efforts to enhance and improve the plan is a good example of perfection being the enemy of progress. And so we've been in this process since February. We had our first pre-application meeting on February 25. Our applications were submitted the first week of March. We received from the city our sufficiency letter on April 5, and our first set of comments on the application on June 4. The Development Review Committee occurred on June 10. We submitted our resubmittals based on comments we received on July 2. We then received additional comments on July 6. We resubmitted again on July 14, and were delayed a bit because of a need to meet with the school district and the county and adjacent developers to coordinate their efforts and plans with our plans. That meeting occurred August 20. We then resubmitted on August 27, received comments on September 14. We resubmitted on September 27. We received comments on October 17, and then had our hearing before the Planning Commission on October 19. I think that you can see what I mean when I say that our efforts and staff's efforts to make this perfect has slowed our progress. And I get the sense that staff will be as happy to see this resolved as we will be, and we're hoping that we're well on our way. We're pleased to be here with you tonight. We appreciate your taking the time to receive our presentation. As I said, we're eager to answer your questions. I'm going to now turn time over to Ben Schumaker, who, as I said, is the representative for the owner who's responsible for this development.
I'm Ben Schumaker, 601 Brenmore Street, Orlando, Florida, 32804. I am land acquisition manager for AMH Development, which is a subsidiary of American Homes for Rent. Really appreciate you being here. As Jim has outlined, we have, we came to this project with a project that was in the county, and we have been working diligently with staff, adjoining owners, et cetera, to try to make what was a project that was approved in the county a project that we think will be a great project for the city. I want to tell you a little bit about American Homes for Rent, the company, because we're not your typical home-building company. We are a company, it's, we're a publicly traded REIT, about 55,000 houses across the country formed in 2012. We undertook about five years ago, not just recently, but we undertook five years ago to start building houses for rent, in addition to the houses we are buying by what we're typically either from builders or on MLS or et cetera. And the idea was to create the best homeowner experience that we possibly could. We're in the process of opening our 100th community across the country. We serve 15 markets where we have homes. We have over 6,000 homes in the state of Florida. And in Central Florida market, we have about 2,000 homes that we operate. We only build homes in markets that we provide the service and the property management that we do. We provide all of our own property management. We provide all of our servicing, our techs, and I'll get into that a little bit more. But our focus is on creating things that are durable, efficient, and desirable. And what we found is by building our own homes in our own neighborhoods, we can create the ideal resident experience for those residents who either, for a variety of reasons, don't own or just want to rent in the community. And there's a lot of reasons people are doing that. About 35% of our residents, quite frankly, plan on renting in general. About 65% may be future homeowners when we survey them. I'm going to take a second, grab my stack, so I have it in front of me. So just a little bit more about us. We've, and I won't belabor it too much, but one of the things that we do as a company is, as I pointed out, we maintain all of our homes, and we think this is a really good thing for our neighborhoods. We don't buy to flip communities. We buy to hold long-term. We are a REIT, so it is, you know, it's in our nature to own property. That's what we do. We don't build and sell like a home builder. And what that results in is a longer-term vision for our communities. And so we anticipate that we're always going to own our homes for about 20 years in the entire community. So when we plan out our communities, and we plan out our amenities, and we plan out the homes, we're thinking about how they can last for a long time. And we also, you know, I've worked for some home builders, and the focus is different. We have to maintain and sell our home every day and every year. We have to take care of our residents when they have complaints. We take care of all of those things. We maintain all of the subdivision. We maintain all of the yards. We maintain everything else. So if we want to be successful as a company, we have to create a very good resident experience. And they've done that through their experiences, the company has, on the experiences they've had in the other single-family rentals. So one of the things about our resident experience, next slide, please, next piece of paper, is it a slide if we have it over there? I'm not really sure. Next piece of paper, please. We do complete service maintenance. We have our own little trucks. There's a little picture of them. Every one of our trucks, the service technician is AC certified, so it's no calling and then having the AC guy come out. There's all these little things. All of our guys have all the stuff that they need to take care of the house. We will, there are some plumbing things we'll call people out for, but most of these guys can even replace dishwashers and fix things if there's a problem. We do highly amenitized communities, and we'll show you the tier-five amenity that we propose, that we're going to build in this community, all of which are maintained by us, not through an HOA, through an HOA, but one that was fully controlled by us. We fully maintain the yards in all of our new communities. We mow the grass. We take care of the irrigation. All of that's handled by us, so we get a clean cut throughout the community. The community always looks good from the amenities throughout all the yards. We fence all of our backyards. Our target demographic generally are families that want to be our houses. Our house size is lent to that, three, fours, and five bedrooms. And that's kind of our focus, is to provide that family experience that they, you know, so desire that we all want. I speak for myself because I've recently sold my house in July and am currently living in a rental. It's changed my perspective, and quite frankly, a lot of times, it's been very nice recently to be able to call somebody up to come fix something. I am going to build something, but nonetheless, it has been a good experience for me. We don't have any for a resident. There's no deferred maintenance. Everything's taken care of. There's no property taxes, no HOA, so there's some certainty. When you sign a lease, you know what you're getting from year to year, and you know that you can just call one person for service. So once again, we talk about everything we try to do is desirable, durable, and efficient. Let me bring up the benefits to the municipality, because there are benefits to municipality about what we do. The entire community is maintained by AH4R, by us. So with that, if there's an issue in a community that you have a problem with, you have one owner to call, similar to an apartment complex if there was a problem, but different. We have all these residents. We enforce our lease and restrictions, et cetera, through a lease, not through an HOA, not through code enforcement otherwise. So if there's a problem with a resident or somebody has an issue, you're calling us, and we're dealing with the issue. It's a significant difference if you've ever been involved with any sort of HOA action and spines, letters, et cetera, that go on through property management. It's a big deal to us. I also want to point out that one of the things that's a little unusual, but it's a benefit to the municipality, is that we pay higher property taxes. We do that regardless of the assessed value because we're not claiming homestead exemptions. So, I mean, there is some benefit just on the $50,000 that you would normally see, or, you know, homestead exemptions, et cetera. So there's, on year-to-year, you know, you're going to see more property taxes coming out of our developments. And once again, everything about our neighborhoods are desirable, durable, and efficient. And that's where I want to lead into what we are thinking with the subdivision and the changes we're going. So the layout we have here has one slight different than what you saw in the package. I don't think Aaron got to update the slides as we, the one slide. I'll point out, in the lower, there was a cul-de-sac in the second entrance onto Pine Grove Road. That's been converted to a full access point. But other than that, this is pretty much the layout that they proposed. So what we're proposing is a combination of 45, 52, and 62-foot lots. Most along the perimeter are 62-foot lots. We have worked with the adjoining owners, Hanover that's working in the county to the south of us, and Pulte that's working to the north of us, to make sure the access points work together. We've also extensively worked with the school board to make sure and providing them another potential access point for their bus area, and also on the north side of the subdivision, providing right-of-way. And in the blue section that you see to your far right, we have obligated ourselves to open up that whole area to be used in whatever form or function that maybe the school board, the city, or otherwise needs. The reason we did that is there's a proposed framework road, which is that yellow road access up to the north that's going to come through there, which will eventually connect, if the county would like it to connect from Pine Grove all the way over to Nova. There may be, for the school board or for the road or otherwise, a need for some retention. It may be that the school board needs to connect with their future high school site to get up there and get their access point a little bit different. None of those things can be figured out exactly right now because they're just in their early planning stages, but we have volunteered to have that property available for that. So when we laid all this out, we laid out the project because we know what we're going to build. And we go through, and we laid out the lot count, so we got rid of the duplexes because we don't build duplexes. We wanted the 45-foot lots. We wanted 62-foot lots because that gave us an opportunity for potentially some third-car garages. And unlike a builder, we really do, will, once approved, know exactly what we build because we'll lay out all of our houses on all of the lots. We do that upfront. We know where they go. We lay them out so we get the right mix. So the monotony clause is not a big deal because we're trying to figure out where everything's going to go, and we work through all that. So from the very beginning of the plan, that's very important to us. Staff has indicated that we ask for our plans to be approved, and currently, you know, there is no architectural guidelines. We know you're going through that process. Makes sense, you know, if you want to have those kind of conditions in place. We know, for instance, if we had just come in with an annexation or an annexation agreement, utility agreement, there wouldn't have been those kind of requirements. So we feel like we're trying, we know what we're going to do, and we think it's really good, so we want you to approve with the plans. If we wanted to do something other than these plans, then we would have to go and whatever was in the code at the time, or however you adopt the ordinance. I mean, there's been some discussion about when the ordinance is placed, is a PSP approved, all those things, and I don't think you've made those final determinations. But we're volunteering to tell you what we're going to build, and if we change from that, we'd have to get approval of whatever was in code at the time. So the first plan I wanted to show you, we actually only have two plans that trigger any issues with the garage issue. So the garage issue is, we understand it, at least as staff had talked about it, was if the garage contemplated over 16 feet, excuse me, 50% of the front elevation of the property is measured across the front, then you might want to have to act on it. We have two plans because of the 45-foot lots. We didn't go with the maximum setback. We went with 30-foot plans on those lots because we like to have additional space in between the houses for drainage, utilities, et cetera. So we only have two plans that are 30-foot, and so that would mean that we'd have a 16-foot garage door on a 30-foot plan, and we'd be slightly over 50%. One is the Bryce Canyon, which we have up for you. We believe that the massing, because it's usually when the talk is about garages, one of the concerns is one-story kind of snout garage plans where the garage sticks out and is prominent in the front elevation. We have two-story plans. Our living space is over that space, and we think that that design lessens the impact of the garage. of the garage, and we think these are great-looking plans. So we've asked you to approve that. A couple of things you can also see on this plan, which is consistent, the reason that we don't think the window requirement's necessary, and we're asking you to approve these, is because they do have window wraps and sills, and we use multiple materials, and we think we meet the intent, if not the specifics of what the staff would be. So, we're saying, not that we're trying to avoid those requirements, we think this meets those requirements if you were to impose them, which they're not, so we're guessing a little bit, but that's why we're asking you to approve the plans. So this is a 1,691-square-foot house, would be our smallest house, and it's a three-bedroom. The next plan is also a 3-2, 1,700 square feet. There's not an issue with the garage. We do have, the garage is recessed. We have a nice front porch. You can see nice elevations with window wraps. We have agreed to wrap whatever we do. We have stone in the columns. We have one less detailed elevation, but we incorporate multiple materials and look like that. So we think the Fillmore is a great plan. People like it, and it's a good living plan with a nice porch, and this is a one-story ranch plan. The next plan is the second plan that would have the garage being 16 feet as a, of a 30-foot plan, and that's the Madison Plan. And the Madison is a 4-2, 1,977 square feet. Once again, nice massing over the garage to, with the, with the different materials that takes away from any impact of the garage. So, we think it achieves that goal. You can see these, two of these plans have shutters. The other ones have wraps around the windows. You can even notice over the door how we have the transom over the doors. They're just, they're good-looking plans, and we've built it numerous places, and we really think it's a positive. I just, with the Madison, we actually had a couple of pictures, so if you wanted to look on the inside, turn to the next slide. This is, this is how our plans look. We have luxury vinyl plank flooring, granite, sillstone, actually sillstone tops, sillstone in the bathroom showers, tile. All of these items are designed to be efficient and durable. We do everything from the stairwells being wider so you can move your stuff up the, up the stairs, to using fluorescent LED caps so that they're not only energy-efficient, but they're easy to replace and fix. And we want to have a house, hence the use of a lot of the hardy board. We even go into a tinning hardy board and stuff, so they'll last longer, look good, and the communities will look good. The second page of this just shows the master bedroom, and shows, in this Madison Plan that I was showing you, there's a little pocket office. We've found that people are going to the four bedrooms, five bedrooms, post-pandemic, or with smaller offices. They want to have these places to work from home, so we're trying to make sure we design that for them in our plans. The other plans, I think, would have looked the same. They don't have the issues with the garages. This is our Eisenhower, which is 2,300 square feet. One thing you will notice, there's a home office in the plan. The other thing you'll notice is we always have our washers and dryers downstairs. That's just something, we don't want leaks in the house, and, you know, issues like that. So, a lot of good stuff in that plan, but we think the design is really, really nice, and we have shutters on all these houses, otherwise a great wrap around there and with the windows there. So we think this meets it with lintels and stuff on the windows. The Roosevelt is the third plan that is 30 feet wide. This one also has massing over the garages, and it's a five-bedroom plan, 2,377 square feet. We have multiple elevations to Roosevelt as well. So, finally, our largest plan would be the Potomac. It's 5-3, has a very nice plan upstairs, nice massing, nice size. The Potomac Plan also, did we not attach elevation? The Potomac Plan is in their, in your plans, there's also a side-entry plan for the Potomac, for side yards that would have been, fit the requirements of both the county and the side yards. So, now I'd like to show you the amenity, and unfortunately, because we didn't get to upload it, we couldn't show you an actual video of going through the amenity. But this is the Tier 5 amenity. This is the Tier 5 amenity that we've identified on the plan, that we've shown the footprint on the plan, on the master plan, et cetera. So, we will be building this amenity. This is what it'll look like. It's a very nice elevation. A lot of our elevations come out of Atlanta, so you'll see a little bit more southern style, I think, to it personally, but it's a really nice style. The amenity has a huge fitness center, yoga room, club room for gathering, co-work space, all kinds of things for our residents to use, in addition to, you know, a nice pool area and stuff like this. We want a big impact for people to use over time. The pictures on the next page is renderings of the entry with the co-work space on the right. This is what it'll look like inside, and this is all outlined, and one of these has been being built in Atlanta today. There's another space, that's a co-work space that we provide for our residents. Another picture of the co-work space. Keep them moving, Jim. Club room with the kitchen, et cetera, for residents and set up in there. Club room and the casual kitchen, same space, different picture, different angle. Thanks, Brooks. So, and the third picture of that one, I didn't know we had that one as well, so I appreciate it. I want to show you, the last slide I wanted to show you before we talked about any questions, was a recently completed amenity. This is in Plant City. This was one of our Tier 4 amenities. This is like 154-lot subdivision in Plant City. This was completed. What I want you to notice is, if you look behind the community, you can see the houses under construction. This was actually completed before the first house was completed in this case. We're not going to wait until we reach a certain threshold for stuff. We build our amenities out front. It's important to our residents, and we build that up front, so we think it's a big plus for the community. So, the last thing, Jim, do you want to take over this? So that's, I'll take questions later, but I'll let Jim finish the presentation. Thank you for your time.
It's appropriate that we express our gratitude to your staff. You may know this, but if not, I'll tell you. I've received, I don't know how many emails after midnight from Erin, which gives you an idea of how invested she is and what a difference she's made in that process. We want to make sure that we're not throwing stones at staff when we challenge some of their conditions that they've proposed. It is, it does require some explanation. As Ben explained, we have no problem with the non-monotony clause. It's a good example of staff's efforts to protect the city and to make this a nicer community, and we, that's, that's not a difficult one for us to comply with, for the reason that Ben explained, that we're not selling these houses as a result. The designs are not subject to the preferences of individual buyers. The houses are planned by us and placed by us, and so the non-monotony clause is something that we can comply with, and I expect will be a nice example in the city of that, of that concern. The, the composition clause is, is not, not a problem for us. We feel similarly about it as we do with the non-monotony clause. The one requirement that we have a problem with as, as it relates to, to the design criteria are the, the requirement, the condition relating to garages, I'm sorry, to windows and doors. We believe that, well, and also garages, we, we believe that our plans, as Ben said, satisfy those concerns. We believe that the plans are attractive, that they achieve what the city hopes to achieve by imposing these, these design criteria. And, and our primary problem with, with leaving those open-ended is, we need predictability because, as Ben says, we're going forward and building our houses as quickly as we possibly can. We need to know that we'll get the benefits of standardized plans, we'll get the benefits of the certainty that comes with having you approve those elevations in advance. Then, when that occurs, there's no guesswork when we submit for our construction permits, and that's not guesswork on our part, nor on, on the city's part. We also, we're, we're not in favor of the, the additional traffic impact analysis, and that's not because we don't care about the effect of, of our project on local traffic. As Ben explained, we have two entrances onto Pine Grove Road. We have a stubbed-out road at the school district site. We have set aside the land at the northern portion of the property to ensure that, that there's sufficient space to meet city, county, and school district concerns for a framework road to go along that portion. Erin explained that the purpose of the additional traffic impact analysis would be to address the improvements that are required to Pine Grove Road. We know that we're going to have to make improvements to Pine Grove Road. They, however, are going to be dictated by the county, and we're working with the county. We know that they're going to require us to, to make improvements to that right-of-way. We're expecting it. We know we're going to pay mobility fees. We're expecting that as well. And as a result, it doesn't seem that, that the additional traffic impact analysis serves any purpose. We've already submitted, I believe, at least three, and it may be four, iterations of that traffic impact analysis, and we feel like it's time to, to move on, and, and that will give us the ability to hammer out what the county requires with respect to the Pine Grove Road improvements. As Ben and I both said, we appreciate your time this evening. We, we, we hope you have questions, and we hope that we can answer them. I think we hope that more than that you have them. And, and we look forward to discussing it with you and then having you submit it to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time we'll get comment from the public. Dennis Talbot. Please state your name and address for the record, and we have three minutes.
My name is Dennis Talbot. My address is exempt. I'm here speaking on behalf of a change.org petition of over 1,700 citizens of this county in opposition to this project. The neighborhood has been fighting this for two years since it originally started here and was withdrawn. We fought it every way through the county. Here are some of our concerns. Number one, you are required to notify all people that reside within a specific zone around the property being proposed. I personally know four people that are within that zone that never received a notification. Based on that thought, I don't think this motion should proceed forward. We can discuss that at the end. I'm going to use my time. We have other concerns. Their replies to their review for annexation say the proposed change is contrary to the established land use pattern. They say no, that other properties are being prepared. None of those properties are even up in preparation at this point in time. We don't think they should be able to count that. And there is no established pattern, anything like this development in that area. Everything in that area, with the exception of Pine Grove Park, which was built in the 1950s and 60s, are half-acre lots or more, not three houses per acre. That's not concurrent with what the thing is. The proposed change would materially alter the population density pattern and thereby increase in overtax the facilities such as schools, utilities. We all know the schools are crowded. Kids are riding on buses on the floor in unsafe conditions around here. That's not appropriate. And here, they're saying that in the course of developmental approvals, we would demonstrate the project will not create substantial burdens on the, we're, we're going to go on a step-by-step pay-as-you-go basis? We're going to prove it as we're moving through this thing? The proposed changes will influence the living conditions in that area because it's not congruent, like I said. In opposition to him, I think the traffic study should continue. I have documents from the county engineer. Pine Grove Road has a B-rated capacity of 400 cars per peak hour. Right at the current time, those numbers for this year and last year are at 273 per peak hour and 236 per peak hour. You're going to put almost 300 houses, approximately 600 cars, on Pine Grove Road? We just think that in the interest of this, there are so many questions that I have about them. They have a one-star Better Business Bureau rating. You're going to deal with that? They have hundreds and hundreds of complaints from their own rental residents. We're going to stick a rental division in Pine Grove? We don't think it's appropriate. We think that this project should be postponed, and more caveats put on the things, such as the county did when they approved it. You can't dump all that traffic on Pine Grove Road. You have to make an entrance to Nova Road, which has a higher traffic capacity. And I think that should be another consideration that needs to be added. I understand.
Thank you.
So, that's all I want to say is, we think it should be postponed until more information is found.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Lord Walker.
Thank you.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Lordus Walker. My property address is 5886 Lake Lacy Drive. I am one of the affected owners on that area due to this project. And thank you for the speech and the points that my fellow resident brought to your attention. I appreciate this opportunity. It is true, I was not ever notified about this project. I have heard about it by pure coincidence because my job is community association manager, and I was actually searching through the records and the agenda to find out some other information for another item. It was my surprise. As I am a community manager, I am well aware of what he just stated. A traffic study needs to be conducted. I am very well-knowledge of the type of business that American Homes for Rent does. And unfortunately, if the project is going to be a 284 homes, we're talking about between 850 vehicles to 1,200 in that community. Simple math, between houses of three bedrooms and houses of four bedrooms and five bedrooms, most of these homes normally are subletted so they can afford paying the rent, and more than four families live together. Couples, let me just say it that way. So that impact is going to hurt us, the ones that live in that small, tiny community. Pine Grove, you all know what the traffic is, and the danger that it becomes every time you leave your house. So please, take a minute to think about this, and yes, be very careful about the traffic study because this is going to affect us, the little ones, not the big money. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's wanting to speak to this? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and please fill out a form before you leave.
Tanner Pratt, no relation to Jim, but I know him well.
We are too.
Well, related many, many generations ago.
He's disowned me.
So, I am building a house currently in Nova Bay, which is the community that our fellow councilman lives in, and I am aware of the project just by driving by and seeing the sign. My question is, one, what is the, what is the city's view? What is their goal that they're trying to achieve with approving something like this or considering something like this? And I have a few questions for the builder in terms of, what is your typical lease length that you have for your, for your residents? And what is the, what would you say is the average number of 911 calls that get generated for your community? Those are the two questions that I really have, and I guess one more, what is your price, price point that you're really wanting to strike for these rentals? I know that in, in our area, the homes are going for anywhere between 400 and a million dollars. It's a really nice area, and so I'm really concerned that putting something of lesser quality would hurt all of the current residents that live there, and I, again, And I, again, love development. I think it's necessary, but I think wise and strategic development is what's being debated here is needed. So I understand the need, and I'm happy to hear out the builder, but I do have some concerns. And again, the traffic, Pine Grove Road, as you know, is falling apart. And another consideration is, what about our sidewalk access or something along that line for Pine Grove Road? Would that be something that the city would require the builder to contribute to? I don't know how that would work, but that would be something that I would also like to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Please fill out a form.
Where's that? Thank you.
Right there. Is there anyone else that would like, in the audience, that I want to offer public comment?
Philip Lantry, 3316 Cypress Point Circle, St. Cloud. You guys have heard me talk before, so you probably know what I'm going to say. But basically, I think the concerns are valid of the residents. I think this could be a dangerous precedent for St. Cloud for a couple of reasons. One is that when you have a community like this that's owned by investors, you run the risk of investors crowding out aspiring homeowners in the community, people that actually want to buy homes here and, you know, live here for the rest of their life, build their family here, that sort of thing. And the houses are owned by investors, or they're owned by this company, I assume is owned by investors. And so you're really at the mercy of these investors for your rent costs, for, you know, how long you can stay in the home and things like that. So some of the other things I want to talk about is, what would keep the renters in this community for long-term versus short-term? I know that he spoke about amenities, you know, showed us some slides of a pool and a nice community center. But one thing I did not see, or a few things I did not see, were, I didn't see a public park, I did not see any place for people to get groceries, I didn't see any place for people to have a daycare facility, I didn't see any schools. And so, as you know, I keep speaking on this, that we're building communities with nothing but houses. And that's not sustainable. As we continue to do that, we are just digging ourselves a deeper hole, essentially. And I feel that also, this type of community means that residents that live here could be less invested in this community. Either they are, you know, they just want to stay there for a year or six months. And on that note, I mean, how do we know that these, what do we have in place legally that prevents these from becoming short-term rentals for people that are vacationing here or something like that? So those were my concerns, as well as, you know, I think that the other residents in the area have valid concerns. So that's all I'm going to say, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please fill out a form. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Lisa Klepper, and I have 1752 up the road, which is right around the corner from this. I have a couple of questions. They were talking about eventually coming to Nova Road, and I guess when I looked up where this is, and it comes out on 192, Nova Road and 192 is already an incredible hot mess. Just recently, we had a fatal accident there a couple of weeks ago. If we add more traffic coming out on either Nova Road coming out or coming out 192 coming down, without putting a light or something there at Nova Road and 192, we're just looking for even more accidents there. Because right now, it's the people coming in from Harmony and, you know, just truckers and stuff coming through on 192 on there. And you cannot cross 192 to get over onto Nova Road, so it's an issue there. So that's already a hazard at that place. I am also concerned about what price range are these, you know, going to be in because they're going to be around the corner from where I'm at. And I really think that a traffic study is definitely a must. I don't know how you could even consider something without a traffic study. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else?
My name is Shirley Hood. I live at 1758 R.S. Ranch Road, St. Cloud. And I'm also upset. I mean, I didn't know about this particular item. I came for another item off of Drewliner Road. But I just can't imagine you putting something like this here out in that neighborhood. Our property is already getting flooded out from what they've done previously here at this commission hearing by them putting in five feet of fill next to our property and then flooding us out. We used to be in Orange Grove, so you know it was the highest property there off of Drewliner Road. So that's what's going to happen to those people that are already living in that area off Pine Grove. Plus, you have Lake Lizzie. That isn't even two lanes in either way. One section is only half of a road. Just go down Lake Lizzie, which this property, people are going to have to use because that's how I have to go to visit my daughter who lives near Harmony. I can't go out the highway because I'd get killed. I have to go the back way, Lake Lizzie, and then come Pine Grove Park and take that out and then make a U-turn so that I could get down on the highway safely without this big traffic right there at Nova Road. So I think for you approving something that density, and I can't imagine having houses with only 45-foot lots, where is the water going to go? It's going to go to the next person's neighbor there and then flood them out, just like poor Mr. Hall that's on the end of Drewliner Road where I live. His property is almost flooded constantly now. Now, that was not the case when they, before they put in the development right next to us. And that's what's going to happen to these people because they're even further out. And it's low land there, so they're going to have to put in a lot of fill, and they're going to flood out their neighbors. I think it's ridiculous for you to go ahead and continue to write, okay, high-density, and not look at the road. I couldn't imagine them not doing a road study there because the traffic, you can't even get out on the road now on Nova Road, let alone on 192 in the morning when you want to go to work or anything. The people have to wait a long time. They need to do a traffic study minimum, but for that kind of density and those size lots, where's the water going to go? To the neighbors next door. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Klepper. Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Terrence Slimon. You all know me. I'm from New York originally, and I've been in rental places. And I've had to try to find a super at times, and it's sometimes almost impossible. I just had to do a quick read on these companies that actually do this, okay? It came out of 2012. A lot of them bought up a lot of the homes that were foreclosed on, out in California and so on, and they actually made a model to do this. And believe it or not, there were a lot of mergers of these companies. They're not all around. There's like but three or four of them still strong in the United States. Bothers me, it's a stock-held company. There's a difference between a person living in a neighborhood, taking care of his home, and having a lot of transient people coming in and out, okay? And when a stock market falls or these homes age, and I was just reading up on that, the investment becomes more, more, and more for them to sustain it as it ages out with the rent. The beginning is great, long-term, and I did hear him mention 20 years, and that's a magic number. 24 years, you take depreciation schedule on a building that you build, okay? You do reinvest, you can take that also. But a lot of companies will come in, a lot of owners, they'll get the depreciation schedule, they're right off the interest, and then they'll do a 1031 exchange and get the hell out. I got a friend of mine who's worth a ton of money, did that in New York. He invested down here in Florida, all 1031 exchanged so they can avoid the taxes. And yes, he, they do, they have an advantage over a home buyer because, yes, while he's, he is paying more in property taxes, in federal taxes, in some states, Florida today you don't have it, but they take the depreciation schedule also combined with the interest write-off, okay? And that, in the beginning, is a great tax incentive. So in the long run, I don't think rentals are good. I think homeownership is better if you can get people in here to afford it. And I got a funny feeling, I see so many rentals, and it reminds me of areas in New York. They do good, they don't invest in them again over and over, they take the depreciation schedule, and the neighborhoods change. People leave, gets run down, then they go over from the east side back to the west side. And I'm seeing a lot of that in Orlando now, and it's actually scaring me.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Mr. Sturgeon, you realize home?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to address the intersection of Nova and 192. First off, point of fact, 192 is a state road. They have completed a warrant analysis for that intersection to have a signalization. We've reached out to the Florida Department of Transportation to see what we can do to expedite that. Right now, it's a two-year timeline, but we're working with them. We have a meeting within two weeks with them, and going to push them to see, to expedite the signalization of that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the applicant, would you like to address any of the questions or concerns that were raised?
I just, there's a few things. One is, without getting into a full tax discussion, we're publicly traded REIT, Real Estate Investment Trust. It's actually a non-taxable entity. We pass through our income, et cetera, the 20 years is just the minimum that we talk about. Our average age of inventory is a lot longer than that. But it is in our benefit, if you're leasing a house, to make sure the house is maintained because every time you change tenants, you have costs with that. I heard some stuff about the tenants themselves. One thing in our leases, we actually will only allow two people. There can be more than two people in the house, but only two people can qualify for a lease. The combined income has to be three times the lease amount. We also, in our leases themselves, only allow four cars to be parked there by lease, not by HOA, not by any other restrictions, so that's the maximum cars you can have parked in a lot, and we enforce that through the lease. In terms of the rents, you know, the rent market has been crazy lately, just like the housing market. We are, we, unlike some of the players in the space, we're vertically integrated, we build everything, we buy the land, we build the houses, we're not outsourcing it. And the approach to that is to keep not only control of the product and make sure it's something nice, but also to make sure that we can deliver a market-priced product for now and years to come. From that standpoint, you know, we're really looking at in this neighborhood, we haven't announced rents because we announce rents at the time we do them, but it's probably between $1,900 to, you know, $2,500 would be what we'd be looking at today, and those rents will go up over time. So if you think about that, then you're talking about tenants that need to show that they make $7,500. Our average tenant across the country, the family household income's over $100,000, the credit score's over 660. These are not people like myself who want to rent. I wanted to rent, I needed a place to rent. They're people that are moving into Florida, into new area, don't know where they want to live, don't want to be forced to buy a new home right-of-way, or just want to be near the school that they want to be in, to choose a district. That's why we choose St. Cloud and look forward to that. So our tenants, I don't know about 911 calls. Our tenants are mainly families, so I doubt that there's as many 911 calls for emergencies if we're talking about police stuff. I don't think we have any particular problems in our communities that we have currently in Florida that I know of, in Tampa, Orlando, or Jacksonville, and I haven't heard of anything particularly, but I can't weigh in on that particular issue. Traffic study has been done. I don't want, we don't want to mislead. We were talking about further traffic studies because we've submitted quite a few of them and going through that. So there has been a traffic study, it's been reviewed extensively, and the improvements on Pine Grove Road that the county is proposing for all three subdivisions, there's two other subdivisions that are being processed through the county without the requirements that we're coming to the city with, is a half-section of the road, so it'd be two lanes, and we'd be building the, currently, a bike lane and a sidewalk would be going all the way down Pine Grove on the east side. There's not right-of-way on the other side of the property, so the county is only requiring that at this point in time. That's at least what we've heard from them through meetings with the two other adjoining I think rents, let's see, oh, as far as single-family rentals, there's about 17 million single-family rentals in the U.S. The institutional rental companies own about two, right now, the big companies that are out there have about 2% of that market today. So most of your single-family rentals are still like the rental house that I own in College Park. You know, it's tenant calling me and I'm trying to get a new fridge for weeks. There's lots of people who are renting their properties, ones and twos. So the institutional renters are out there. We think we're different than a lot of the other companies. I'm sure, there's no doubt, if you look, you're going to find complaints about our rentals, but I can also show you the people that love our rentals and do that. It's like in the internet age, there's always plenty of that either way. However, it's not that big a part of the market. You know, if there's going to be the thousands of permits, we think that we provide a service, we provide a way for people to live in the community that want to live here in St. Cloud. We've provided a nice house, and we're finding out that people enjoy renting. To change some of the demographics as the millennials and stuff move into this housing, not a lot of them are used to apartments. They're used to leasing their cars. All these things, they've come out, you know, so it's a different approach, and they like to be, have everything done service. My kids, I've tried to train them to do their own things and fix their cars and take like that, but it's not like when I was growing up where we knew how to take care of everything and fix the yard and everything else. Slightly different generation, and people like to have things done for them. We provide that service, and people like our houses, and they like what we do, and we do a nice job. And we wanted to, we didn't want to force our way into the community. We found a project that was already approved in the county with 315 units, and we tried to make it better. If we went back to the county, we could go do that today and submit construction plans, but that's not what we want to do. And we talked to the city, we wanted to be in St. Cloud, and we feel like we'll be a good neighbor and a good partner with the city. So I take any other questions?
Anything else, Jim, you had? Thank you. This time we'll have discussion of most, sorry, you already spoken. We'll have discussion of most of my council.
Well, he said he would take questions. I was going to ask a question, but...
Are they meant from the council?
From the council, sir. We'll have discussions that are motion by council.
Did staff want to, did you want to answer something?
I would like to add to the...
Yes. Sorry.
Just on the, on the traffic study, we've worked extensively with the two surrounding project owners. These are not city roads other than what will be built in the subdivision. So the mobility fees that they will pay, we have offered to, there's improvements to the adjacent roads, and we hope that we can inspire the county to make the appropriate decisions on what those improvements should be, and eventually, a tri-party agreement for our mobility fees to contribute to improvements above and beyond what their project necessitates may come forward out of that. So that's the process that we've gone through with that traffic study, but we're not quite finalized with it. When you look at the review timelines that they put up earlier with the multiple submittals, the reason why that traffic study analysis is not complete yet is, one of the final submittals came in at 5:00 on a Friday. We pushed those comments out on a Sunday. We completed the review between the Friday and the Sunday, and we had that planning commission meeting on a Tuesday. So we put as much time as we could into that analysis, but those conversations are still ongoing. Since the start of that coordination with the county, they have approached FDOT, and they're doing a signal warrant analysis at Pine Grove Road and US 192 as well. So these three projects, when combined, may necessitate a signal there as well, and that examination has already begun. And then regarding Lake Lizzie Road, again, that's a county road as well, but my understanding is that in the community meetings for the Trinity Place subdivision, that's at the corner of Lake Lizzie and Pine Grove, they objected to improvements being made to Lake Lizzie Road because they thought that if it was improved, people would drive on it. And so they have asked that that road not be improved, and because it's a county road, that's the decision that they have made. So they have modeled that all of their trips won't take that road because the current residents are not asking for that improvement to be made. But if they were, the, our mobility fees could contribute to that improvement as well. So that is why we've asked that the traffic study continue to go on to address these concerns and to make sure the improvements that are made to support the subdivision actually get made. And just as... And just as a small reminder, this project that you're approving, the request before you, is for residential zoning, is for PUD zoning. It's not for a rental community. These are individual platted lots that could be owned by anyone. They happen to be, being proposed to be owned by a residential rental community. So I understand the community's concerns about that. But again, just like race, or age, or any other factor, the request before you is the zoning is a residential PUD.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So, I would like to hear the answer to the lease length that was asked. I didn't hear an answer to that.
That was before I grabbed my sheet of paper to write down some questions. We lease for a minimum of one-year lease. Our average tenant in our new home communities is supposed to is about, is little over three years. That's not required, and we don't do three-year leases. We do one-year leases at a time, but our average length of lease is over three years across the country in our new home communities.
Okay. And how many different tiers of amenities are there?
There's five tiers. We have a, tier one would be your traditional playground totlot area. By the way, we will have that in walking past. We didn't highlight that in here, but as part of the overall plan. A tier two is a cabana kind of totlot area with a pool. A tier three consists of a larger clubhouse area, which also has exercise facilities, et cetera, in it with some office space. Tier four is like we're building, the one I showed you from Plant City, which has extensive exercise space, gathering spaces, but doesn't have like the co-work space and the larger club room.
So, does tier five have a pool?
It does.
Okay, because I didn't see that on the site.
I had it on my video that we couldn't get uploaded properly. I bought, it should be on, it's on the master plan, the pool area shows as well.
So, my comment to my fellow council members, if you recall on our last council meeting, this is a new product type that's just shown up in the city of St. Cloud, and I had talked with our city attorney about it on the last development that came through. And we had the discussion that we really were not, we're not deciding about ownership type, like whether, you know, who owns a property, that's not really what we were deciding on. But I had asked at the end of our last meeting if the city staff could do research and kind of come back with pros and cons, or things that we've been seeing around, you know, like other places that have it, is there lessons learned? Like, we really need to focus on garbage pickup, or there's really been an issue with 911 calls, or there's really been like issues on that? And so, when I had my agenda review, I asked if we had this presentation. I was told that the applicant was making a presentation, but I don't really think that's probably a fair and balanced presentation. So, I would like to ask again for our staff to research this product type and see if there's anything that we need to add or be taking into consideration, like when these, these communities come. I mean, frankly, I didn't even see it in our packet, that it was this type of ownership in here. It was just brought up during my agenda review for this. So, I mean, that's, I don't think our staff is ready to do a presentation.
We are.
Are they? Okay, great.
Mayor, may I recommend Dr. Anderson to come up and review this? Thank you.
Good evening, council. We do not have an official presentation, but we do have a list of pros and cons that we would like to go over that we have conceptualized. Before doing so, we wanted to note that because this is still such a new type of development, particularly in Florida, there is scant evidence, in terms of empirical evidence, for pros or cons for this type of development. Currently, most of these notions are going to be conceptual, and we focused on the primary issues that we wanted to address with this type of development coming into this city. However, at the same time, these are general, they are not specific to this project. So it's just encompassing the overall notion of what these build-to-rent homes are like. So I just wanted to put that emphasis before we did go over the pros and cons. For the first pro, we look at how it does allow for a single-family lifestyle for those that are unable to purchase one at that given point in time. It also may provide and continually update state-of-the-art housing amenities, such as smart housing applications, which was mentioned during the applicant's presentation. Build-to-rent communities may also further enable internal community development, enhance the internal community relations specifically through having less tenant turnover than multifamily apartments or other traditional multifamily units. As we had seen from some research, according to Rocket Mortgage, the average length is about three years, which is consistent with what the applicant had just mentioned about their property. In addition to the less turnover for overall residents, we also looked into the lack, the fact that there's more stable long-term housing for these types of properties. And that does also associate with the typical lease ranges that they propose in general. Of course, we did hear today that this one does have a minimum of one-year leases, which is more typical to an association of traditional multifamily. It doesn't deviate that much. However, other build-to-rents do have a minimum of three-year leases in different fashions. And then we also have some other issues that I want to address, such as it may relieve some parking issues that a typical multifamily community may have, specifically through the maintenance that they'll be establishing in their leases. And that was obviously, of course, something they highlighted, where there's only four cars allowed per dwelling unit. So that's something that we wanted to look into. And in addition to that, we were also highlighting that they may have enhanced landscaping and community upkeep through the fact that they have the ownership occurring for all the individual lots. So, in relation to the cons, this may negatively impact future homeowner rates. This could be because of the fact that you are taking away land that could have been owned. It's also much less dense in a certain context compared to traditional multifamily. As we saw today, it was roughly three dwelling units per acre, and most of our multifamily falls into the range of medium-density to high-density residential, which would be four to 18 dwelling units per acre. So there is a little bit of fear about it may contribute to urban sprawl. And in addition to that, we have found from conceptual evidence so far that middle and lower-priced homes in markets with low land costs are actually most suitable for these build-to-rent estates, which may limit the development to certain parts of the county and could also create a little bit of imbalance in terms of the socioeconomic status of renters and homeowners. Build-to-rent properties also typically have higher rents than apartments, so it doesn't necessarily create more of an affordable platform. It does diversify our housing stock, but it does not create more affordability in that term of context. And then renters may not be able to make home improvements, such as remodeling. And because of this, there may be a lack of personalization of the housing, as although it does provide a single-family lifestyle, you don't get that ability to really be able to mold it into your own type of lifestyle. And then, build-to-rent properties also can range widely in style, but they're typically smaller lots than those that are proposed for single-family houses. So that is where they do get the density to come up a little bit, but it's something that's, that needs to be considered in the long term, especially if we're talking about in 20 years, these could potentially be sold as individual lots. Then they're looking at individual lots that are smaller than the traditional lot that you might buy for a single-family home. And then lastly, depending on how the ownership proceeds to go, and this again is a general context, it may potentially limit homeownership for the advancement of these individuals, particularly, for instance, if a, if a community was owned in a single parcel rather than being parceled out for each individual lot, then there is no ability for them to be able to purchase their lot later on. So that has happened in certain types of build-to-rents, that's not example today, but it is something to keep in mind in terms of the pros and cons. And for today's, I just want to make sure that we're evident that these contexts are, again, conceptual. There is not a direct empirical line of evidence for them, and they were not project-specific. They're just a guidance tool for understanding how we're going to conceptualize this type of community inside of St. Cloud. And I'm available for any questions.
Councilman Urban?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment. A gentleman said that I lived out that way. I actually don't, my family does though, and I travel on Pine Grove Road and Nova Road almost daily. And the traffic has become increasingly more dangerous throughout the recent years. So I would like to see the transportation impact analysis continue, just to make sure I understand they are county roads. But I would like to see that continue, that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. First set of questions are on the, some of these are for staff, some of these might be for the applicant, some of these might be for Dan as well. On the transportation analysis, we didn't get really a copy of that at all, and it's gone through a couple of reviews, but what was the result of that? Were there specific improvements outlined that applicant needs to make, or?
Sure. What we, the county's comprehensive plan calls for a new framework street at the north end of the road. So that was initially what the study focused on. When we saw the impact on Pine Grove Road and knew that without any other connectivity over to Nova, the trips would primarily, most of, about 10% are going north to Nova and possibly east out that way, but that's very minimal, maybe even 5%. So the rest of them are trying to go out to 192. Currently, the Center Lake Ranch has a framework street that's proposed to connect to Nova, and this is the extension of that. So this project is dedicating the right-of-way for that, so is the Tyson North project that's being reviewed by the county. And we wanted to determine through the study whether or not making that connection at the north end of this project would sufficiently relieve any impact at 192 and Pine Grove Road. What we found was with that connected, connection at the north end, the, there would need to be right-of-way acquisition, possibly to align the intersection at Nova Road, and that it being at the very north end of these projects didn't provide the, it didn't change the travel patterns that much. So that's what some of the iterations of the study have shown. In response to that, this project added additional connections stubbing out to the west to the school board property, who's about to develop their transportation facility there at the south end. So this project responded to that by adding an additional access point. They show it as a future potential connection. And they've demonstrated in their final master plan how that roadway would connect over. There's a subdivision off of Nova Road, and at that intersection there for the transportation depot, there will be a light, most likely. That's in review now with the county. And so that connection through there to this subdivision would divert trips that way and ensure they would get to the signal at Nova, which is underway now in analysis. So, but because those connections are not being made with this project, none of their studies demonstrated that they had to be made. The question really comes down to, the final questions that we have not yet answered is exactly what improvements need to be made to Pine Grove Road. They have, of course, turn lanes into their subdivision entrances, but a turn lane to Lake Lizzie Road, that is not yet demonstrated as being necessary, and we're pushing back on that. We made those comments on the, on the projects that are in review with the county now. And then in response to that, the county has pushed FDOT to study the signal at Pine Grove and 192. So that's all still ongoing. Again, those, we typically, if this was straight zoning, we wouldn't see a traffic study until the subdivision construction plans, but we have the luxury of getting it sooner here. Additionally, they added that second project entrance onto Pine Grove Road to ensure that stacking coming out of their entrance wouldn't back up. So they had one main entrance at the southern end of their project on the Pine Grove Road. They, they connect to the adjacent subdivision, so there's lots of ways out of here, but it all kind of circles back to Pine Grove Road currently. So those improvements are critical, and they're still in analysis. And this final master plan is for the stuff onsite. They're dedicating sufficient right-of-way with this final master plan to allow for whatever improvement shakeout of that study to be made. They're dedicating significantly more right-of-way than the project is proposing to the south of them, and we think that's sufficient to get to the next phase, to really get to the details of what needs to be done on Pine Grove Road.
Okay. And are we adding the, you mentioned in the traffic study that those three projects are being included in that study, but are we studying the school at all? Because that, to me, is a major, we have a lot of examples of how schools are put on some major roads, and then major traffic issues happen from there. You get parents zipping all over, trying to figure out how to get out, how to drop off kids on the side of the road to have them walk up to the school. I mean, is that something that's a part of this analysis, to make sure that we get that right?
The trips from, well, there's two different things proposed on that school board property. One is the transportation depot. That was a few years out, but that's been advanced. They had some struggles on the west side of the county bringing forward a transportation depot. So this transportation depot, I understand, has been advanced. They don't have plans exactly of how it's going to lay out. What we presented at the recent workshop was a conceptual layout by the school board, but that's not informal review yet. They are assessing how utility easements to get these proposed subdivision utilities will connect through the school board property. Again, because the utilities are currently on Nova Road. And so they've been coordinating on that, so we've insisted that the traffic analyses be coordinated as well. But the high school trips, the size of the high school, we could predict those numbers. But these projects are not responsible for mitigating the traffic from that that may happen, you know, 10 or 15 years in the future. We don't even have a timeline for the high school, it's probably a decade out.
And the start of that is getting some of these connections and making sure that they happen.
Exactly.
I didn't see, they're stubbing out to the west, but I didn't see a road connecting them to Nova or Pine Grove or anywhere else.
Right. And we worked extensively to determine if the school board would allow the right-of-way to be dedicated today, to make that connection today. The path from the southernmost connection to Nova Road is much longer than, you know, at the north end of their property, they're a couple hundred feet from Nova Road. But that connection has not been, I guess, it's not feasible because the alignment requires the taking of a, of a single-family home or a portion of the single-family property that's right at that intersection there at the north end. So that's why we felt the connection at the south end is more feasible. And when the transportation depot comes in, they will construct that connection. And hopefully, by the time this subdivision is entirely built out, that connection will be there. So this subdivision will stub to a connection that the transportation depot will make. Is my understanding.
And the traffic light out there as well, you said, right?
Yes.
The, the kind of statement, and I don't know who made that determination of, let's not improve Lake Lizzie. I don't know if that stops people from using, and I have friends that live up there, and I've almost been taken out by cars going 40 miles an hour down that road.
I agree with you.
Is that one of those, like, I don't know what the solve is, and I hope we can figure something out? But that just seems like we're creating a safety issue with all the housing going in around it, and then just kind of forgetting about it and not, not doing something to help safety improvements there.
Right. That roadway, once this project, if this project were annexed, and if it were to come into the city, those adjacent projects would be contiguous with city limits, and we would take them into the city as well, based on their water service agreements that they're, they hope to achieve once they get their subdivision approvals with the county. Lake Lizzie will not come into the city until 50% of the property adjacent to Lake Lizzie is actually in the city. And those are long-term homeowners there with large lots, and they have not sold, and they, they have conveyed that they did not wish to. So my understanding is that might be some time. But those conversations happened in community meetings with the county, and that's their road, and we can control it.
And I don't, I don't want that to be widened or, or anything done to it other than just try to make sure that cut-through traffic doesn't happen. So, traffic calming device or something that can stop people from trying to use that as a cut-through. Because once that school's in there, it's going to be a cut-through.
I agree.
And then, there was mention of Pine Grove improvements, a half-section, all that. Is there a specific timing laid out as part of the approvals?
Yeah. So the, the improvements to Pine Grove Road, we have asked for the project south of this to have those improvements on a separate SCP, because we want to ensure that the improvements are not just adjacent to their property, but they incorporate along Pine Grove Road where the existing subdivisions, and this project particularly wraps around two single-family homes on about five acres. We want to be sure that those improvements are made to Pine Grove in front of those parcels as well, and not just in front of these new subdivisions. So we don't want the sidewalk to start and stop. So we've consistently met with the county to advocate for ways that we can agree to participate in the funding of those improvements and ensure that they get made. So we've, that's what they're studying now, is can they fit those improvements in? Because those properties are not obligated to dedicate right-of-way to make it happen, but they are working very hard to engineer it so it can happen.
Thank you. On the architectural standards, this, going through all the, all the elevations at a meeting is exactly what I didn't want us to do. I wanted us to set policy and then have staff review and ensure compliance with policy. But with that, you know, I didn't see too many just big stucco boxes, which is good. There was articulation, there was, they're decent-looking and better than a lot of the communities I see now. But I don't, like, we don't have anything to review it against with code, so. So, one of the questions I have just overall on this project is, what are the current approvals? Is this fully approved in the county, and we're now just annexing because they're, they're ready to go? Or what, if this gets denied for annexation, that same plan just gets built in the county?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The plan with the duplexes and more units than this.
Okay. So that's kind of one of those... So, that's kind of one of those of, we get stuck in that situation. On the maintenance side, I do like that all of the lawns get mowed at the same time. I know we're not really weighing in on the whole short-term rental thing, because, Dan, this might be a question for you, it's like, is that something we can even weigh in on with fair housing and?
The rental piece, this is not, you, you, tonight, you're not considering whether this is the re, a rental community or not. This is a single-family project, and that's how you have to look at it.
Okay. But, but if they didn't plat them into individual lots, it would be a multi-family project, and we would kind of be able to weigh in on some of that?
I'll, you'd have a little bit more on, on those issues related to the multifamily use. But as you're probably aware, the winnish you just mentioned, there are many single-family communities that have ownership, single, that have fee simple ownership of properties where the development actually maintains all the yards anyway. So, that, that's kind of one that maybe kind of crosses over, and you probably could ask the question about that, especially as part of this PUD and the smaller, and some of the things they're asking.
Yeah. I have a friend that lives in the Oaks in Kissimmee, and that, he's in one of the little neighborhoods that, they, they own where the house is, but then everything else is maintained by the HOA, and it's, it's kind of nice. He likes not having to move along. If we approve this, are there any requirements that the county put on the development that would get negated or lessened by, by this approval? Like, were the, did they have any conditions of approval on their zoning or any of the improvements?
My understanding is the entitlements that they receive from the county were more intense than what they've proposed through the city, and I, I was not aware of any conditions that we have not asked for. I think we've asked for more, especially with regard to the analysis of Pine Grove Road.
Okay. Couple of questions. This is probably for the applicant. Thank you. There was a question about short-term rentals. I know you said, whoever. There was a question, you said one-year minimum lease, and I'm sure you have provisions if they need to break the lease, they got to pay something, but are short-term rentals allowed in the community?
No.
Okay. But currently with state?
It's not permitted by zoning either. It's, it's not.
Well, I, I don't.
I don't know if you have any prohibitions. We, we don't, we don't permit in our leases, and we don't do short-term rentals.
Okay. So, that's over and above? Because I know state statute changes, it seems like every year with, what's allowed or not.
There, there's always a potential bill in at least the last five years to address short-term rentals and to preempt the local governments on short-term rentals. If that's something the applicant is willing to agree to, it might be well, willing to put it into this, into the PUD.
Are you talking about like Airbnb stuff, or are you talking about traditional vacation rentals? I, I, I saw, I guess I'm not moving with the times. I still think a short-term rental is.
I think they're talking about anything less than a year.
Yeah. Or overnight rentals or any of that?
Yeah, I, I.
But that's in your lease?
Yeah, one-year leases.
Okay.
You, you can go on the website and click on the application.
Okay. And no subleases by that tenant?
You can add that. I think you can add that, I could, think you could add that as an additional condition to the PUD if you'd like.
Street trees. Are you guys installing street trees?
Yes.
Between the curb and the sidewalk?
The requirements, the landscape plan was laid out, but it has the street trees in there, and I think additional, another lot, and tree on the back of the lot included.
Okay. And then, I don't know if you, if you can answer this, if you have an engineer with you that can. There's that house that's a cut-out in between your two entrances, and then also at Harris Court. There's kind of a wetland in that area, which typically means that those areas kind of, areas around you drain into that wetland, right? Are you providing drainage connections for those areas to make sure that they don't become the low areas, just like Ms. Klepper, that, that whole area, just to make sure that they don't become that same issue?
Yeah. I, I, my engineer is in France. Hats off to him. Glad he's having a good time, he told me last week. But we have a retaining wall along that side where it's lower, so it matches up, and that's with the area we were talking about, that lot two eighty-three. So, we'll have a retaining wall, so everything will be a drainage, and they will flow into our subdivisions and our, our property.
But if that area on the other side of the wall was lower, is there a drainage connection to make sure that that maintains the natural flow that it has?
That I don't know, as we're sitting here today, and as we go through the PSP and the site construction plans, we would have to address that, because obviously, any drainage they had would have to be able to flow into our property, because we have to take their drainage.
Okay. So, I just wanted to have that on the record.
Could I just clarify one thing? If you could pull that up there. Could you, is there any way to turn that back on? One thing, and the county has, it's been a moving target, and this is from the discussion, it's the last discussion, so we had the engineers with the county on Pine Grove Road. So, to be clear, we will be improving along Pine Grove Road, not just in front of our boundary on Pine Grove Road, but along the whole section. And the Lake Lizzie issues are really more connected to issues with subdivision to the south. They join Lake Lizzie. One of the reasons, I think, in the county, I don't know if specifically prohibited, but one of the things in the county approvals was that, at that point, I don't know if the owner asked for it or otherwise, but they didn't want a connection to the school board site, and the school board was proceeding that way, because they didn't, they were worried about buses and stuff coming through there. We think it's beneficial to have the connection point, and apparently, as far as the traffic warrant study, having our subdivision tie into the, to the, to the school site will help the light on Nova get approved earlier, because the traffic would be sufficient for the county then to put in that light. So, that's one of the other reasons. Erin pushed for it. We were trying to figure it out and doing that. In addition, as she was pointing out, as far as along the school board, trying to connect to the north, it's, if you can picture to the north, I think you've got the plans in front of you, sorry, Bill, is there? We actually looked at trying to get, provide right-of-way up along the property line, and certain, the school board just said, hey, we're, we're not there yet. So, we left the flexibility. The wetland on the north side of there is designated, can be adjusted, it's, it doesn't, it's not in a conservation easement. We've done other mitigation to free it up, so if they need to clip it for ten feet or something along that side, so I'm talking about wetland or, they could get up there. Likely, they kind of come around the wetland and try to get further down on that connection point. So, between Erin, the school board, and we reached out to the school board directly to have those conversations, we've really, we're a long-term owner, and so it's important that we help and think about traffic issues that are going to be two, three, four, five, twenty years down the road. We're attracted to the site because of the high school. Schools are a very big deal to us. We, we like to target areas with, with good schools, and St. Cloud has that. So, you know, we're, we're thinking long-term and, and trying to solve some of those issues the best we can.
Thank you.
Yeah, something, Mr.? Counselor want to ask you?
I, I guess, when I first started off, I wasn't a big fan of the project, but the more that we are having this discussion, and I can see what's happening to the grid, the grid's being bought up by not just residents, but big companies are coming in, and they're not maintaining the properties. So, I like the idea that if we are getting into rentals or subleasing these, well, we're not subleasing them, but rentals, that it's maintained by one, yeah, you can come on.
I just, I apologize.
So, I, I like that idea. It, it is something new for me. I've been trying to research it as much as I can, other than the company that's in front of us. I, I'm not a big, I guess I'm not a big fan of the garage compartment of that. I wish, I really wish we had our, all our studies done and all our architectural standards. So, it just seems like everything's being rushed at this point. This was kind of a, it came in front of us on Friday afternoon, and then I've just been trying to figure out. I did have my briefing, and they answered most of my questions, but there's, there's no way to put our architectural standards in there, and definitely, I, I want that traffic study to continue forward.
Well, I, I think we, I, I, I think that Erin would agree, the, our traffic study was completed per the methodology, you know, initially, we asked for methodology, the city gives us the methodology. Then there were some changes, looking at the impact of the other road. We, we redid that. Then we looked at these new connection points, and we redid that. And then there was just some, before the last meeting, there was some technical language about background trips and stuff like that we worked through. I think the study that's being conducted and is pretty much more related to other sites, Lake Lizzie and some of those other things. I think we have established everything that we can do on our site. What we just didn't want to do is come up and say, hey, there's a traffic study being done on the state road or the county road. What the county agrees to do, we've tried to work with everybody, including the county and our joining owners, what the county agrees to do is kind of what we're going to have to do, because they're going to improve Pine Grove together along that, and we are willing to do that. We're not looking for impact fee credits for our improvements along Pine Grove Road. They've outlined a section. It's about sixty-four feet right-of-way in our section, so there's not enough to do a full seventy-eight-foot section up there, but there will be a bike lane, it'll be striped, and similar to what I think that the county did, like on Jones Road or Jack Brack initially, until they, the other half of the, the property came in. So, we're not really opposed to a traffic study, we just didn't want to feel like there's another traffic study to study. We, we kind of feel like we know what we've got, and the impact of other surrounding developments may not be determined for quite some time.
Right. And I can't hold you to the architectural standards that we don't have, so.
And that's why we feel like it, it's, it's a positive that we're, we're bringing in and committing to something.
Right.
And, you know, if, if somebody, in fact, I think in your water and sewer agreements with Polte, for instance, it probably, I think it requires a fifteen hundred square-foot house, and no two houses being adjacent to, are you the same elevation. So, we really feel like we've gone above and beyond that, and, because we're, we're building a nice neighborhood. I will tell you that there was a neighborhood in Coulter, if you know developers anyway, Coulter developed down in Tampa, and we were building with other builders, and I, I spoke to the developer, because honestly, when I took this job, I didn't know what home for rents was about either. I worked for D.O. Horton, I worked for KBA, it was division president with Richmond American Homes. So, it was completely different concepts, that they were going to build actual neighborhoods for rent. It was new to me. So, I went and talked to them, and, and they told me at that time, and I'm, this is biased, but he, he told me, he said, you know, not only are your houses you can't distinguish, okay, but your houses generally look better. The other thing, I was in, down there, and, and a new resident walked into a house, and we're sitting into a new home, and he was like, this is the only place I could find a fenced yard. I'm moving out of a house. My landlord refused to fence the yard. I want something for my dog and kids, and, you know, this is the only place we could find it. So, we, we really are trying to build something nice, and people want to live in our product, and they're nice people. I mean, you'll go into our neighborhoods, and there's Christmas decorations during the holidays, or, you know, there's Thanksgiving, it's just, it, it, these are not people, it's just, I, I don't know, I, I'm a, I'm a tenant. I just, I think there's a lot of people that are renting homes that are, the idea of ownership doesn't mean you're not a resident.
Right. And I guess this is part for the citizens, we've been down this road before. We denied the project, and went back to the county, gets approved, and then the county does it in their own way. We, our standard is a, I feel is better, three, four houses per acre, not where they would add a lot more. So, and if we, I would assume, Mr. Manzera, is if we denied this project, it would just go back to the county, and they would just continue on.
They have entitlements in county, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Well, I've been sitting on this council here for about six years now, going on six, and this has certainly been a whole new project to consider. I'm certainly always give deference to our staff who has worked hard, who's spent a lot of time working on this, and is obviously looking at all the time, you know, that has been put into this. I'm, you know, we have a great staff, and there are things I like about this. I, I think this is certainly one of the new trends that's going to continue to happen in our country, and it's going to come to, come to our area. I like the, certainly like the idea of the property being maintained, the buildings, the yards by your company. I like the fenced yards with everyone having their fenced yards. So, there's a lot of things I like. I, I know this is a first reading, and, and so, I just will depend on the staff, if we approve this, for you to continue to hold their feet in the fire on all these caveats, because there's a lot of them, a lot of conditions, and, and that you continue to hold, you know, the standard high on the architectural standards, and, you know, the traffic study, those things are very important, you know, non-monotony, all of that. So, it's, it's interesting, this, these proposals. Mr. Manzera?
And I'm just going to point out to you, as you pointed out, this is first reading. Because this is a, a larger project, it has to be transferred up to the state, so it will not come back to you until February for your final action, which would give the staff and the applicant enough time to maybe clean up and work on most of the things we've been talking about tonight.
Okay. Do we have another discussion from, from our council? Any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
We had, we had some discussion about no subleasing. Is there some wording we can put in that, or is that, can we put something in, or he's said that he wouldn't do it, so can we put that in the?
A sublease piece?
Yeah.
Sure. I mean, I think you could put that in there. I don't think they'd have a problem with that.
Right.
It's, that becomes very difficult to enforce, I will tell you.
I, I was, I was going to say, I think the, you know, one-year minimum leases is kind of what we're talking about. I don't, quite frankly, we have, we're this little, this development arm is a little part of this major property management company, so I, I don't even know what are requirements on sublease. I could find out about that.
Can we say it's a minimum of a one-year lease?
Yes.
Yeah. And I think that was what we talked about earlier. And they probably, if they're using a standard lease agreement, it probably does have a sublet with approval from the, from the owner of the land.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure that we do, Dan, but I, I don't know. I could find out. I could find out before the next meeting.
I think you're big, the easier thing to enforce and the ba, the better issue is the one-year, the one-year minimum on the lease.
Any other comments? Then, do we have a motion concerning the first reading, item number five, ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-one? Could I entertain a motion?
All right. So, so this is one of those where it's going to impact the city and the county, no matter what happens in it. And collectively as a group, we just have to figure out if, right now, the only development that is in the city that would be a ad valorem paying customer east of Nova Road, or there are none, east of Nova Road. So, just, I guess this is us making the decision of, do we want the city limits to go beyond Nova onto Pine Grove? Because it's going to affect us on city streets, on county streets, and on state road, no matter what. I guess I have one more question, because I wanted to ask about the fire station. Since you've been here all, all morning, or all, all night.
Fire station?
The, the fire deputy chief behind you.
Oh.
The guy with a badge behind you.
I'm sorry. Visiting one.
So, plans for, I mean, there's the, the county station on Pine Grove. Regardless if this area comes in or not, is that station still stay when we build a station in Center Lake? Or kind of how's that, the planning of that whole area work?
This is completely rumor mill. I do know that they are looking at expanding, going farther north and east. So, I would assume that if we have a fully-staffed fire station in Center Lake, they would eventually probably repurpose. Timeline-wise, I cannot tell you that.
Okay. But is that, the station in Center Lake, is that sized and positioned to, to service this area? All the way out to Pine Grove and along the center of Pine Grove?
For the concepts of where I believe this station is going to be in the Center Lake DRI, I do believe we'll have access to Nova, so it would be within our four-minute response. But depending on where those stubs in the future go, it could extend if we had to come down the Pine Grove to get to the back of the neighborhood. We would still be within probably a four-to-six-minute range, but that's all concept based off of what happens at the Center Lake DRI. So, in theory, yes, we'd still be able to have a good response force there.
Okay. Because that, to me, is this, this, the annexation side, is that's our biggest thing we have thing we have to decide, is police, they have good coverage everywhere. Water, sewer, I mean, that's already being provided. It's the fire station and the response time of making sure we provide that level of service to the residents for that area.
I think something to think about for that would be, depending on where the development is in that area, could dictate the size and number of units that we house at that area. I think current expectation is it would be just a single engine and rescue response out of that area. Depending on the growth of development of how that turns out in the future, you know, you may have to add an additional resource, but we don't forecast that currently. That would be closer to the Nora Tyson residence.
Okay, and if this gets annexed, would, the county is still going to respond to calls in there if they're the closest station?
They would, yeah. We would still have a mutual aid agreement, so they would cover that as long as, as they're there, of course. And the closer we get to building Nora Tyson, obviously, they're going to react to what we do. But, yeah, we would still have a mutual aid agreement, no different than what they do to help us with Lancaster subdivision now.
Perfect, thank you.
You got it?
Do you want, you have a question?
Yeah.
Hey, don't go anywhere. When do you, when do you think the Nora Tyson station's future?
It's within the five-year plan. Currently, right now, we're focused more on the west side. That's where data shows right now on call volume. So, we are looking at the Station 35 project in Tohoku. Station 34 and a future Rowan Bridge 36 is in the works. Right now, it'd be like a flip of the coin. What I can tell you is, is there is increased call volume on the east side of town. Time-distance travel is the biggest issue. Takes us about seven to nine minutes on a bad day to get there. So, that's something we would have to consider depending on how fast the east side grows, especially if we're expanding that far north. Currently, Chief Miller and I are projecting in the next five years that we have to have serious conversation to put a station on Nora Tyson. So, with this expediting, I think we probably have to have that conversation a little sooner, but we don't have necessarily the volume currently, but we do have the length and time from dispatch to first arriving unit. So, that's why that mutual aid's very important right now, because they do help get the ALS service there. So, currently, currently speaking, we have, the rescue that will service that area would be Rescue 34. So, we do not have a transport-capable unit other than Rescue 34, but that is currently housed at Station 30, 31. So, that's where we get into the little bit of the weeds with that time-distance travel.
And does the county have an ALS? Does the county have a transport at Pine Grove Station?
They do not. They only have an ALS engine. Their closest transport unit is 53, so it's kind of a flip of a coin of who can get there. Traditionally speaking, we can get there faster as far as our rescue goes. The next closest transport-capable rescue that they have would be in Harmony, oh, I'm sorry, Holapal. So, we would, we would definitely have to service medical transport capabilities to that area, no matter what.
Is 53 Narcusi?
53 is Deer Run.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
But there's no stop, I mean, it's...
Right.
Rescue-wise, we are definitely the closest unit to get there as far as transport capabilities, as far as fire suppression. Their Pine Grove station, obviously, gets us every time because of that location.
Wow, okay, so even if this isn't in the city, we're still providing the service in this area for, for transport?
Majority of the time, yes.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we currently service even down to Eden right now on mutual aid majority of the time, because we're just a closer unit.
Wow, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Can I entertain a motion?
Yeah, that almost helped my decision of, this is going to affect us no matter what, and it's going to get built, maybe even more dense if it doesn't come into the city. So, with that, I will motion for approval of the first reading introduction of ordinance 2021-21 with the stipulations outlined in the staff report, and also coming back with some of the changes that we discussed today for that second reading.
And can we just hold off on those until you get to the last item?
Sure.
Okay.
This is an annexation piece. Thank you.
So, we have a motion for the approval of the annexation. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Trace, the second, from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Do I have a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 2021-23, the future land use?
So moved.
We have a motion for Councilmember Trace. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Do we have a motion for the adoption of item number seven, ordinance number 2021-24? Mr. Trace, would you like to?
Motion approved 21-24 with the recommendations outlined by staff, and also coming back with some of the items addressed that we discussed tonight.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Do you want to add the language about the one-year lease?
Yeah.
Friendly amendment.
Yep.
Thank you.
Was that a second?
Second.
So, we have this motion by Councilmember Trace, second by Councilmember Matheny, with the noted items that we added in as amendments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Trace is the item number five, the first reading of ordinance number 2021-55. Would you share that, Madam Clerk?
Eight. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-55, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to include Article 3.
Excuse me a second. You need to go outside for your discussions, please. Thank you, I'm sorry. Claudia, would you please finish?
And Sony Regulations, Division 27, Entertainment District, in its entirety, providing for separability, conflicts, codification, and effective date.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Abysmal Abreu City Manager's Office. I am here to present ordinance 2021-55. This ordinance is for a land development code amendment specifically to the Entertainment District overlay. The purpose of this amendment is first and foremost a collaboration with the downtown businesses. The city is proposing the use of outside alcohol consumption and the creation of the Entertainment District event permit to create opportunities for a concentration of amenities and entertainment venues within a pedestrian-friendly segment of the city's downtown. We see a series of benefits to this amendment. First and foremost, the encouragement of events, artistic performances, and other such forms of organized entertainment within the district, building a reputation of the, for the city as a livable, walkable, and entertaining city that cares not only about the quality of its residents, but also about the success of its businesses. This is, like I've mentioned before, this was a collaboration between the business community, also nonprofit organizations, city residents, and local government, serving together as a perfect example of community, community cooperation. And lastly, in part with our economic development strategic goal and objective of working towards creating a destination location in the city of St. Cloud. So, let's talk a little bit about the Entertainment District. Many might not know, but the city currently has an Entertainment District. It was established back in 2018 by ordinance 2018-28. That currently bounds the Entertainment District to North, Ninth Street to the north. We have Pennsylvania Avenue as the eastern boundary. South boundary is Thirteenth Street, and the western boundary is Massachusetts Avenue. In the current Entertainment District, outdoor alcohol consumption is only permitted through a special event or cafe permit. The specification of, on where, when, and how to consume alcoholic beverages are detailed within these permits. Alcoholic beverage consumption under the special event is limited to the following requirements. We have there that, under the, this current Entertainment District, alcoholic beverages is only defined as beer and wine. The time for outdoor consumption is specifically dictated in, within the event timeframe. We have a drink limit of two drinks per person from removal from premises on a 20-ounce container, no matter what the container is made of. And like I mentioned, it's under the special event citywide type permitting process, which is designed for large crowds. Now, let's dive in on what is being proposed here tonight. The proposed amendment seeks to change the district by expanding the eastern boundary to Florida Avenue. Previously, I mentioned the eastern boundary ended at Pennsylvania. We're proposing expanding it to Florida Avenue. As you can see, there's a map of what the proposed entertainment district will look like. Alcoholic beverage consumption, we're proposing that it's not longer allowed only through a special event permit, but if you follow these requirements here that I'm going to go over today. So, we have, in this proposal, we're defining alcoholic beverages as beer, wine, and liquor. The time for outdoor consumption will be from Wednesday to Saturday, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. We have a drink limit of one drink per valid ID from removal from premises. On a 16-ounce clear plastic cup with registered logo, and also the creation of the event permit for the Entertainment District, which is designed for reoccurring events, and something that is, it makes it, makes the process a little bit more easier. I want to go back to the container, later in the discussion, because the businesses downtown brought something to my attention regarding acquiring the materials and for the 16-ounce container. Due to the shortage of supplies and everything that we have right now, there's a little bit of a complication there that we'd like to have them the opportunity to also mention to council. I provided the council also with a graph of the current and the proposed. As you can see, pretty much the only difference will be is that no longer will be alcohol permitted to be consumed in the outdoors, only with a special event, but as long as they follow the parameters of the date, times, and the type of container, as long, that will be allowed in the, in the outdoors, in the Entertainment District. We also did research on how other communities have adopted ordinance to allow outdoor alcohol consumption. These municipalities have had success in this area. They compare to the City of St. Cloud by being small cities with unique character within the central Florida region. As you can see here in the graph, over the table, we, we are, the proposed amendment is similar to the other municipalities with the exemption of a few categories, most notably the hours of consumption. City of St. Cloud is proposing a more conservative timeframe, only allowing outdoor drinking Wednesday through Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. The City of Clermont adopted just beer and wine as part of what alcoholic beverage means, two drinks per person to be removed from premises on a 20-ounce plastic cup, so a little bit bigger container. St. Cloud and Mandora will be the only municipalities to ask establishments to register with the city if they would like to participate in this program. By registering, we mean we're not trying to charge an extra charge, just it will be a designation on their normal BTR that says that they are an outdoor alcohol consumption establishment, so they can dispense these drinks. The city also put together a safety plan by request of the Planning Commission. City staff regroup and work together with the community to put together the following plan to ensure the safety of all residents, visitors, and businesses in the district. Number one, increase police presence in the district. Two, increase surveillance with new cameras installed throughout strategic places within the districts. These cameras are in the process of being installed right now. Signs will be posted throughout businesses and the districts detailing the dos and don'ts of this amendment. And lastly, community collaboration. Businesses owner, business owners will still follow the law, monitor the premises, its surroundings for suspicious activities, and work closely with the city. The city will also be providing information to the community through different media outlets to ensure everyone is aware of the provision of this ordinance. We're already talking of how we're going to push the message, because not only we're trying to promote this to the outside, we also want to make sure that the citizens and the residents here know exactly what the dos and don'ts are, and social media is the bigger avenue that we have right now, possibly partnering with Positively O.S.A. to create videos of what the boundaries are and what to do and not to do throughout these hours. This amendment is also creating an event permit. The Entertainment District event permit is designed for those activities that are one-time or reoccurring, deemed outside of the day-to-day business of the district with the intention of attracting an influx of visitors. The ordinance incorporates all of the requirement documentation for application, the formal review process, and steps to require any city services. The intent is to simplify the process for holding events in the district, and hopefully this spurs more events like the monthly market, which is a huge success, to take place here in our beautiful downtown. And also, I would like to revisit after my presentation a great point that Councilmember Matheny brought during her briefing regarding reoccurring timeframes. This amendment goes in part with our economic development and growth management strategic plans, goals. Staff has recommended approval of this ordinance. This item was also forwarded to the Chamber of Commerce, and no negative comments were received. The Planning Commission heard this item this past Tuesday and recommended approval with a three-to-two vote, and we are, I'm here to, tonight, this evening, asking for approval of first reading of ordinance 2021-55. I'm here to answer any questions you might have, as well as members of the community.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Please state your name, address?
Good evening, Council. Paula Stark, Executive Director of St. Cloud Main Street. We just wanted to make you aware that we have been working directly with staff. We did pull all of the establishments downtown as it relates to bar owners and our restaurant owners, and had several committee meetings during the spring. We went through the ordinance line item by line item. We made recommendations and things that we could, you know, say that this we can go along with, or this is an idea from the merchants themselves, how would this work for them. So, we have been giving that to the staff. We've been working with Abysmal on all of these things. We were at the Planning Commission on Tuesday night. We wholeheartedly approved this, and we wanted to make sure that you knew that Main Street has approved this through their Board of Directors, and we will be applying and paying for any signage for like the retails that may not want to have anyone go into their business with alcohol. We'll provide that signage so that that assists them, as well as our restaurant and bar owners. We will be doing signage for them, stating the ordinance and what the requirements are for those patrons who would like to take alcohol out of their establishments. So, there's additional levels of input that has been made, and we've tried to bring some of those issues forward. Can you still hear me? All of a sudden, I couldn't hear me. So, our bar owners and our restaurant owners have all been engaged in this process. All the things that have been of concern, everyone is aware of, and we're trying to work through that process. We would like to remind everybody that this particular ordinance is a six-month trial, so it's not like we've done this forever and ever amen, and we won't be able to address it if there's something that does not work with it. So, if you have any additional questions of us, we'll be here to answer.
Thank you. Matt Stetson?
I appreciate you all hearing some of us small business owners on the subject. We do have a lot to chime in about. I do appear a little scruffy tonight. I apologize for that, because James Brown's the hardest man, hardest working man in showbiz. I'm the hardest working man in the brew biz. It's good to see you all again. You all saw me about two years ago, too. Some of y'all did, Lynette, of course, and Mayor Blackwell. And I think they've actually missed that one. You were out with excuse on that one. But Keith was here, too, so of course we can give recognition to everybody. Thank you very much. So, I am a huge proponent for this action. I have a little bit of concern about how we're going to govern things. I think cutting off at midnight is definitely a good move. I think that's going to keep a lot of the Bourbon Street-style riffraff down. I think as long as you have good business owners who back this and intend to use it to promote a tourism activity style, sort of bring new life into the downtown area. As long as we're really responsible as business owners, we have a bunch of really good business owners who want to make this work. I think as long as we support it correctly, this is going to be amazing for our downtown. I've seen this do incredible things. I have friends in Clermont who are benefiting greatly from this in the brewing industry. I just, I'm just very excited about this, and I wanted to voice my excitement. I think that this could be pretty amazing and wonderful, based on other friends of mine in the industry that get to benefit from these styles of things. So, I just want to kind of voice my support for this action and let you know that we do intend, we've been talking for months and months and months and months and months about this now, it feels like, about turning this into a walking district. And we're really, really concerned about keeping this safe, and keeping this to be a more professional-style, business-like style environment, not, there's a thousand words I could use, but we'll call it a mess. We don't want it to be a mess. We want it to be something that's really attractive. And I find that most of the people who are our patrons now, and the new population, as well as, most of, most of the old population too, of St. Cloud, really want to see this be something that we can all truly enjoy and not have it be any sort of a disaster. So, I just want to kind of voice in on that and, and say how much I love living in St. Cloud. I did forget to say that I do now live in St. Cloud, and I'm proud to say that. So, I'm now a resident here in downtown as a homeowner, so that can go on the record as well. So, thank you very much for hearing me. Looking for... Looking forward to maybe having this happen for us.
Thank you, Mr. Stetson.
Absolutely.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Okay. Was this item you submitted to me to be read into the public record?
I think it's just for distribution to the, to the council.
Thank you. This time, we'll have discussion and a motion by council. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I didn't ask you this, Abysmal, in my agenda review, and I'm sure your answer to this is going to be yes. But we talked, we talked this over with the Police Department, right? And they're...
Correct.
Okay. Because I know you said there was a safety plan, but, so we talked this over with the Police Department. The only concern that I have is like, if I was going to partake in this, and I have a drink, and I walk out of a bar, and how do I exactly know where the limits of the district is? And then, you know, like, are we going to supply a bunch more trash cans downtown? So that, you know, hey, I'm hitting the line, let me toss my drink, you know, like, that, those like, kind of like, parts and pieces are on my mind. But I'm sure we can figure that out. And Ms. Stark's point, too, is, you know, we always can revisit things, and if we need to make adjustments. And the other thing that I had talked with Abysmal about in my agenda review was, there's a process that the businesses take to become a registered business to be able to do this. Should there, is there some kind of way, if, if there were a business that we were having issues with and not following the rules, to eliminate the approval, cancel the approval, or have the approval? I mean, recurring the approval annually probably seems like a pain, but is there a way that we could write some language in there that says, you know, like, if we're having recurring problems with said business, then your approval is removed? That's, I would like...
There's something that can be added.
Yeah, I'd like to see something like that. I know it's a first reading, but, but I definitely think it's an interesting concept. I think Mr. Askew is the one who started this whole thing with Entertainment District back in the day. So, I tell you what, I was downtown Wednesday, holy moly, I was shocked. It's, it's really amazing.
In a good way, yeah. Holy moly in a good way.
Yeah, 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 holy moly in a good way. Like, I actually rode my bike, and I was like, what is that, like? I was like, what is that bright light, you know? Our lights downtown, they're really bright. And then as I got closer, I'm like, oh, it's the monthly market. And wow, it was really packed. I was, and it's, both streets were packed. I was really impressed. So, I think this would be a nice addition to that as well, so. Those were just my two comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. So, yeah, we are adjusting the CRA officer schedule to monitor this a little more and have nighttime service. On this email that we got, the street light, we're going to look in, are we going to look into that?
That was part of the safety plan concerns as well, and we have taken precautions to make sure that those are addressed. Like I mentioned, the cameras will be strategically positioned based on those levels of light, low levels of light areas. And as well as with the renovations of Pennsylvania Avenue that will add more lighting to the, to the area as well, to address some of the concerns, Pennsylvania being one of them that needs it.
And then, this is completely separate topic, but since the three of you are sitting up there, I'd kind of like to ask this question. I was against this before, the variable message signs, or electronic message signs. But the ones that Kissimmee put in on Neptune Road are really nice.
Yeah, they're nice.
And we talked about it at Krabby Bills, and then some other areas, and then that just kind of went away. Is that something that, I think it'd be good to have one over by the New York Light to say, this is downtown? Because I, before the monthly market, Tuesday nights, I see them out there putting the little signs in, and it's like, it'd be nice if we had something lit. I could just say, hey, two days from now, you got the monthly market, or whatever else is going on downtown. So, I was against that before, but now, there's good examples of that.
Mr. Sturgeon, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add that to the strategic plan discussion for next year. And I like those signs, too. When I drive to Kissimmee, I think we can do something on both sides of the city and do something else to make sure that's highlighted.
Yeah, and I'm sure we have to put policy around it of what things are going to be on there, and yada, yada. But I think that's, we had two examples that were really frustrating, because they weren't following the rules. But now we have a good one that, you know, we can help show the right way.
Two people live by there, should I point that out?
Yeah.
That I know.
Councilmember Askew?
First of all, I'd like to thank Main Street, Paula, and the business owners for really putting your heads together and coming up with this. This is just an idea I stole from Claremont, and I happen to know a lawyer there that gave me a cup. So, if you, if you...
Was it full?
It was empty. It was empty. It's actually in my office. I'd be happy to show it to you. And on that cup, there's a map and stuff, but I understand with the, they're explaining the whole cup challenge in the world right now, so. No, appreciate Main Street, everybody coming together and stuff like this. This is what makes, I appreciate Main Street, and I appreciate helping to fund that, because I think it took a lot of heat off the city. You guys came up with your own ideas. You worked with the police, and, and this is what makes a great city, when you get the community together like that. So I appreciate it, and of course, I'm for this.
Councilmember Urban?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback off of Councilmember Askew's statement. I know Main Street has worked very, very hard to, and engaged all the business owners downtown, and I'm excited to try this out, so thank you.
Well, I certainly have been pleased with all of the growth with the special events that have happened in our downtown. And I don't know how you're going to enforce a one-cup limit. I'd like to see that one, pull that one off, dump it in the trash. Oh, no, this is my first one, so. Anyway, I'm certain, I'm in favor of supporting this. So I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of Ordinance 2021-55. Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to items nine and 11. I need for you to read item 11 first, and then item nine second.
First reading and introduction for Ordinance Number 2021-68. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of medium-density residential to approximately 10.31 acres identified as Fertick Town Homes located east of Michigan Avenue and south of Fertick Road, providing the amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan filing and, of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability, and effect, subraibility, copies on file, and effective date. First reading and introduction for Ordinance Number 2021-58. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, resoning 10.31 acres identified as Fertick Town Homes from A agriculture to R3 multifamily residential compatible with a medium-density residential future land use designation adopted by Ordinance Number 2021-68, located east of Michigan Avenue and south of Fertick Road, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability, and effect, subraibility, copies on file, and effective date.
Good evening, Council. Jesse Anderson, Senior Planner. Before you, we have the Fertick Town Homes Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is for Ordinance Number 2021-68, which is for approximately 10.31 acres of land. It's located south of Fertick Road and east of Michigan Avenue. The map before you depicts the future land use for the parcels in question, as well as the surrounding area. For the background, the current future land use is low-density residential, which in the city allows for up to four dwelling units per acre. The proposed future land use is medium-density residential, which allows for up to 10 dwelling units per acre. Staff does find the development to be compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts on city facilities. Going back to the first slide. As you can see, there are several medium-density developments surrounding the parcels in question on this map. And just north of these, just north of the medium-density parcels that you do see are some more high-density parcels. This is also in good location in relation to a school district, which can enhance walkability in the future as these developments continue to provide sidewalks and other amenities that will allow for more pedestrian activity. And the density will enable us to have less urban sprawl in an area specifically surrounding a school district, which will eliminate some of the pressure that we do see from pickup and drop-off times. Going into the overall maximum density, we look at how the maximum density for the existing land use, again, is at four dwelling units per acre, and the proposed future land use would be at 10. This correlates with the maximum number of dwelling units projected under the existing future land use as approximately 41 dwelling units per the entire project. Whereas, under the proposed future land use, this would increase to approximately 103. And for the proposed zoning that we currently have, that's going to be concurrent with this comprehensive plan, we do have townhomes as being permitted, whereas, under the current zoning, they are not permitted. It is consistent with several different comprehensive plan goals, such as housing element policy 1.1.1, policy 1.1.2, 1.3.3, and 1.3.6. It is also consistent with the Strategic Plan Goal of Growth Management, and DRC and staff recommend approval of Ordinance 2021-68. And the Planning Commission did vote three to two yesterday, or sorry, Tuesday night, to deny the comprehensive plan. But we do request that City Council look to approve the ordinance in concert with the 16 findings of the Land Development Code. Moving on to the concurrent zoning map application, we have Ordinance 2021-58, which is again for approximately 10.31 acres of land, south of Fertick Road and east of Michigan Avenue. And before you, this map depicts the current zoning for the parcels in question, as well as the surrounding areas. So the proposed future land use is medium-density residential. The current zoning is agricultural, and the proposed zoning is R3 multifamily residential. The proposed zoning is compatible with the proposed future land use. And staff does find that the development is compatible with the surrounding area, with no adverse impacts on city facilities. It is consistent, again, with the Growth Management Strategic Plan Goal, and DRC and staff once again recommend approval of Ordinance 2021-58. On the meeting on 11/16/2021, Planning Commission actually voted to approve this zoning with a three-to-two vote. City Council has then, once again, requested to approve Ordinance 2021-58 according to the 16 findings of the Land Development Code. Staff is here for any questions. And I believe the applicant may be here as well. Yes, he is.
Is the developer here?
Yes.
Would you like to speak to this?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Craig Zoel, Councilman Walter. I am representing the applicant tonight, eight Broadway, Kissimmee, Suite 104. And I'm here to take any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. We'll receive public comment this time. Sam Deuce? I'm not so sure about the last name. You'll have to correct me on that, okay, Sam?
I've corrected it all of my life, so I'm prone to that. My name's Sam Deuce. I live at 531 Michigan Estates Circle. And my point of contention with this property, I don't necessarily have, in speaking with my fellow neighbors in Michigan Estates, we're not opposed to development. We understand that as a city, we're growing, and there will be development. It's this intensifying the development in this specific area, where we are just within a stone's throw of the school, and there's already a traffic nightmare along Michigan, even with the staggered starts that has kind of spread the traffic nightmare out to longer, to two parts of the day that extend longer and longer. And even to the point where it spills over onto private property. Cars park at our entrance, they park along Fertick. Rather than staying in line and trying to work their way in through the school, pick up and/or drop off, there'll be parents that stop along the side of the road right as cars are going by. They're parked, they're parked all along our entryway, because they would rather just stay there, make their kids walk all the way down to here, and then pick them up, drop them off from there. And also, the church across the street, next to the high school, middle school. So, really, it is a, it is a problem that is already right now. This is going to just further intensify it. 80 townhomes versus what the current zoning would allow would be, you know, maybe less than that at the maximum. I just request that you really consider declining this motion. And because with 80 townhomes, that's a minimum of two cars per unit. 160 cars, that's just more people. Even if they're walking to school, that's 160 cars, more people trying to get to work, get out of there. I mean, they can't walk to work, right? There is going to be more traffic in that area, and it's already a safety issue. The sidewalk is right next to the road. We're just one slipped pedal from falling in front of a car, or, you know, a skateboard out in front of a bus. The bus barn is right there, so there's all kinds of issues that we have with this. And I not only speak for myself, I have, you know, some neighbors that were unable to make it that were also, you know, concerned about this development in this area, and the intensity of it, and how it will really kind of exacerbate the issue even further. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deuce. Viviana Onn?
I have to prepare something, because I'm so nervous. Good evening. My name is Viviana Onn, and I live at Michigan Estates Circle. I'm a homeowner there, and I am the president of the Michigan Estates HOA, Inc., that is comprised of 82 homes. According to tonight's agenda, the Planning Commission and City Manager are recommending approval of these ordinances, but we feel that these ordinances will impact Michigan Estates. The location of this proposed development is right across the street from our community. The association's major concerns are the infrastructure and school impact. There are three schools on Michigan Avenue when traffic during the beginning and end of the school day for each is horrible. Before approving these ordinances, please consider the infrastructure. Another development will create more traffic, which could have an adverse effect with the safety of our children. Please consider the number of children that already go to school in these three schools. As well, there is a large development in progress on Michigan Avenue across from the elementary school, whose impact is yet to be determined. Adding 80 townhomes on 10 acres with only a two-lane road and low-density housing all around would not be consistent with good planning for the future impact of the present communities. We understand that this is the first hearing, but again, prior to approving of these ordinances, please take a closer look at our area and see how it will affect everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jerome Fertick?
Good evening. It's been a long night, huh? Talking about housing developments? I've been in the pain before. It was about 2005. I sat in the same seat y'all are sitting in. And the reason I sat there, because Michigan Estates was trying to put townhomes. And on a piece of net property next to a property that has low density. Not stopping progress, do your job, do your research, look at the property around it. Go out there and visit the property. See that the property does not fit. If we go back to the map, if you don't mind, there is no high density anywhere near this property. Can you show me where there's high density? Or even medium density, show me. We own, on the east side, you heard from Michigan Estates, that it's homes that I fought hard to make, homes instead of townhomes. This is the same type of thing. Don't want to stop progression. I want you all just to put the right product in the area. So you can see, there is no high density on this road. It's a simple decision, simple fit, put a good product there, put a nice home. You have long-term, not transient people that are moving in and out. I mean, I can, next reading, if this goes on, I will bring you a lot of people. I will bring a lot of facts. What do y'all need to know? I'll show you Palm Garden Apartments, how many police calls come. I'll show you the Felling Road on Michigan Avenue. How many facts do you need to know to make a decision for your constituents that put you in this office? Quit thinking that you know everything because staff tells you. Do your homework. Go out there and check out the actual property. Look at it. Staff does a good job, but they're giving it to you from the developer's side. Your residents are telling you what the concern is. We live it every day. So listen to your constituents, look at the facts. There is no high density, no low density. I speak for three properties there that we own. And I guarantee you they're low density. It's a single-family home. Any questions for me? Anything you want to know about the property? Anything you want to know about the properties around there? I have 36 seconds unless you ask me a question.
I'll ask you a question. I went to go check out the property. I went at the wrong time. School was in session, and I did not realize that. I swear, it took 10 minutes to get down that road, so...
It's bad. I could sit here and complain to you all, but you all live here. You know how Michigan Avenue is. It's a bad road, anyway. You have a hard job trying to keep up with roads. You're always going to be behind. There's money issues, I get it, but Michigan Avenue is so far behind, you have three schools dumping on it. I mean, all you know what that traffic study is. There has to be a traffic study. Do you all know if that's a felling road? Because when I was in office, it was a felling road. Is it still felling?
I don't know.
How are we putting these developments on it? And we don't know. Just, please do your homework, because I'm asking. Make a decision off facts, not my emotions or my opinion. I'm telling you the facts. There is no high-density, there is no medium-density. It is all single-family homes. I ask that you all deny this request for R3 and go low-density, please. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Fertick. Does anyone else like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have...
Shirley Hood. I live at 1758 RS Ranch Road. It's not close to that development, but I've lived in St. Cloud for 40 years. I don't even go down Michigan, because the road is so hard to get through with the children there, and you already have the apartments near the school there. You're going to put more on the other side? How are those people that live there going to get home and do their shopping and everything and have all this traffic there? It's not a street that designed for higher density. It should be left the way it is. Low-density, like what the people are already living in the area there that are already spoken. It should not be made more people in the area and more cars, twice as many cars. That's ridiculous.
Thank you. At this time, we'll receive a discussion or motion by council. Councilmember Trace.
Thank you. So with this map, it's good this one's up here. Why were these properties around here, why did they have to go to medium-density residential? I mean, these developed quite a while ago, but like, we have third-of-an-acre lots off Rebecca. We have, the whole Michigan Estates is like, three units an acre. Why did that have to go medium-density residential? Was that the code back when those went?
So to be completely transparent, and I apologize that I did not mention this before, Michigan Estates is mislabeled on this map. The other two medium densities are medium-density. We did verify that. Michigan Estates is actually a low-density, and that can be noted by our zoning map, which conveys it as an R1B. R1B is for a low-density zoning district, in correlation, obviously, with the future land use element. So with that, it is important to note that that area is, of course, low-density, but right to its west is R2, which is a medium-density, and south of parcels that are directly south of the ones that we're talking about today is also R2 for medium-density.
Got you. Okay, but that just, to me, that is not of a scale or intensity that has a medium-density residential development, those pieces, those properties there.
Our R2 does fall under medium-density, just because its overall allowance allows for more than four dwelling units per acre.
Understood, but it's just the scale of it is not a medium-density scale. Okay.
And just as a point, just north on Michigan Avenue is the two-high-density residential properties. I can broaden out the map for our next meeting, so that I can display where those are in proximity, so you can at least get an understanding of how far away they are, so you can make as much of an informed decision as possible. And we are working with the applicant in terms of Fertick, sorry, yeah, in terms of Fertick Road. So we are working with them to look into improvements for that roadway. We're in conversations right now, so we haven't had anything fine print just yet, but that's for the preliminary subdivision plan that we're doing that for. And of course, we'll have a TIA at the subdivision construction plans, so just wanted to note those two things as well.
Thank you. And just, this is one of those, same issue I was talking about in the last one, of the schools on the major roads, just great gridlock, and just, it's, we need other avenues, other ways out, other roadway connections, but I'm not in favor of the scale of medium-density residential in this particular area. I'd be fine with the rezoning into a single-family residential on that four-units-an-acre max, but I'm just not a fan of a medium-density residential.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgeon.
I was going to have our transportation manager, if I could, come up and talk about some of those improvements we've looked at in that area.
You'll be fine.
Thank you, city manager. Aaron Struck, Transportation Manager, just to speak to some of the connectivity that we're working on in the area. Fertick Road is a major collector on our Transportation Mobility Master Plan. It connects through the Roan Bridge Mixed Use District that is just east of here. Of course, Mr. Fertick's properties are in between this property and that Mixed Use District. And so we don't have a timeline for when they're interested in providing additional improvements, but through the Roan Bridge Mixed Use District that's to the east, they have some wide avenue-type cross-sections, and the intention is that that connectivity east-west will be provided, kind of parallel to Nor- Nolte, and provide some additional ways for people to get out of the city, and especially over to the new interchange at the Turnpike, that would alleviate them needing to go north-south on Michigan. Additionally, the city is looking into improvements on Fertick that are just west of here, that will provide connectivity to the St. Cloud Airfield Project that you all recently approved. So the connectivity out and to the west is increasing in the area. We've had several pre-application meetings with other properties just west of here, some of the green spaces that you see west of Michigan recently, and we've ensured that those developments are not built like some of these old ones, where they provide a local road into their subdivision, and then they have a cul-de-sac at the end. What we're ensuring is that each of those provide connectivity to the north, to the south, and that a grid network can be, continue to be implemented. So I think that's Delaware to the west there. A lot of those are providing additional connections there. So the problem with Michigan right now is that, you know, you really get on it, and you can't really go anywhere from it until you get further north past the schools. So we're trying to work on those connections in this area to the south. We have asked that they provide an 80-foot-wide cross-section and improve the entire frontage adjacent to the subdivision, to ensure that we don't have to come back and construct that after they're developed. That's above and beyond what our code requires. They may ask for mobility fee credits to make those additional improvements, but we want to ensure that the improvements are there when the development comes. And I think that's all. If you have any questions for me, I did pull the traffic counts from Osceola County, who in 2020 conducted counts on Michigan, and unfortunately, it doesn't exactly call out peak-hour times as well, as I'm sure the folks in the room want to know about, and that's what they're speaking to, but it has a level of Service B.
And during the peak hour, no one's going anywhere, so it's, there's not really anything to count.
Right.
Okay.
Counselor Rasque?
Thank you, Aaron, for that, by the way. I love the data that you give us. You know, when we approved Roan Bridge, that was a long time ago, we asked that Fertick Road would go all the way straight across. We also asked for a north-south, which I believe is Orange Ave, to connect all the way down to Nolte. And we did the same for the airfield, making sure that they have interconnecting ability. It's going to be a long time coming before that Fertick Road becomes interconnected. They haven't even broke ground on Roan Bridge. The airport over there, that's going to be built out, and then you're going to have a ton of traffic there. I'm not a big fan of the location of this townhome here. I think it should probably end up staying residential. I understand that down the road, this will be a big road and lots of traffic, but right now, I just can't see that this road can handle it, B-rated or not. It's just not going to be, I don't see it working, so...
Counselor Matheny?
Thank you. I had the same comments, that I thought that, based on the maps in the surrounding area, that low-density residential was more appropriate than the change to R3. So I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Askew for the denial of ordinance number 2021-68. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Rasque?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Okay.
And I'll just, for purpose of the record, since you denied the first one, we'll take, I think it would be good if you just take a denial of item number nine also.
Okay. Could I have a motion for the denial of ordinance number 2021-58? I make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Rasque. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Rasque?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Brings us to item number 10. Madam Clerk?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-65, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, closing, vacating, and abandoning the easement located at 1750 and 1770 Drewliner Road, specifically described in the body of this ordinance, providing the severability, for severability conflicts, and an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Stephen White, Community Development. Case before you is Drewliner Road for the abandonment of easement for ordinance 2021-065. And on the first slide, you can see aerial photograph depicting the parcels involved with this abandonment. The subject sites are located at 1750 and 1770 Drewliner Road. The applicant is requesting the abandonment of the utility easement running through the parcels. They would like this done prior to the property being platted. Section 5.5.4.4(c) of the Land Development Code provides for the reviews and proposals to the abandonments, easements, and rightaways. No objections were received with requests for utilities and governmental agencies for this abandonment. This aligns with the City of St. Cloud's strategic plans and goals of growth management. Excuse me. DRC and staff has recommended approval of ordinance 2021-65, and we're also requesting approval from City Council for ordinance 2021-65. I'm available for any questions, and I believe the applicant is here as well.
Would the applicant like to speak to this item?
Craig Zow, Hanson and Walter, eight Broadway, Kissimmee. I'm representing the client tonight. The actual abandonment of easement was a requirement of the PSP by staff for us to submit that, and it is just an old OUC easement. And OUC has no objections with the abandonment of it.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Please step forward. State your name and address.
My name is Lisa Klepper, and I live at 908 Michigan Avenue, but I also have property at 1752 up the road. I'm not opposed to abandoning the easement, as long as that doesn't mean that they're now going to come back and change how many homes that they were planning to build, that you guys have already approved, that this isn't going to allow them to put more homes on there, change the elevation up. And again, as you guys are fully aware, flood me from the other side. The east side is still not fixed. There's been water in that swale for months. It never dries, and it just is a smelly mess. So just, that's my only concern, is to make sure that this is not going to be an opportunity to add even more homes to that area. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to add public comment?
Since I've sat there that long, my name is Shirley Hood, 1758 RS Ranch Road, which is adjacent to the two properties involved there. So that was my only concern, too. I don't want these developers coming in. They're already flooding us out, but also my neighbors. I'm concerned more about my neighbors are getting flooded out more than I am, but I don't want any problem with more houses that they're going to put in there, because they're getting rid of the easement. Then they think they have more land that they could develop, you know, and put more houses on, so...
Thank you. Is anyone else that would like to speak? If not, we'll have discussion and/or a motion by council.
Would you like staff to answer that question?
Yes.
But I can add, it's, the abandonment of this paper basically is unused. The utility easement shouldn't impact any of that. They're not, this action doesn't grant them any more entitlement rights than they already have.
Right. Councilmember Trace?
What? Ms. Matheny, go first. I heard her late.
You're going to run the meeting?
Well, I heard her.
Councilmember Trace. All right, go ahead.
Fine. Ladies first, I'm trying to be nice. So process-wise with this, it seems like a lot of staff time to go through this. Like, is this something, I thought this was normally done through plat, like, you just plat over the easements and make sure no one objects? Like, I didn't know why we have to do these, a whole standalone process.
We are working on cleaning that up. There is a part of the Land Development Code that addresses the abandonment of easement and which, I don't know how to say this, essentially ties them to the right-of-way abandonments, which you've seen, and establishes a similar process for a right-of-way abandonment. So it's something we have to clean up in the Land Development Code, and that's one of the things that's on staff, so that you will not have to see these abandonments and these easements. Some of these utility easements, which those, especially those that have been acquired after the city entered into its agreement with OUC, OUC has the right, has the ability to just release those under that agreement, so you don't see those. But some of these older ones, because of that Land Development Code provision, it's, in our view, you have to, we have to comply with that. So we're trying to clean that up, so you don't have to deal with those.
Okay, perfect, because I'm sure you guys have better things to do than do some of these...
Stephen yelled at me a few times about this.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Counselor Matheny?
Thank you. I was just going to ask the city manager if we could have staff go back out again and help Ms. Hood and Ms. Klepper with the drainage. I've heard them say this six different meetings, and I thought we sent somebody out there to try to help them, and is that something you can get staff to go and...
Mayor, if I could have Mr. Edwards address that.
Please, Mr. Edwards.
Don Edwards, Public Works Director. Yes, we have gone out there. We have been in communication with the developer. The developer went out there and started to fix the problem. We recognize that there's more of a problem. We emailed the developer back, told them we expected the problem to be fixed. They acknowledged the problem, the bigger problem, and there is a maintenance bond that is involved with this, and if we don't get a reasonable, a response in a reasonable amount of time, I will call the bonding company to force the issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is it the same, are these the same developers? The ones that are doing this new phase and the one that caused the old phase?
I don't know who the new phase is, but I know the developer. I mean, it's Lennar, if that's how you say it.
So it's not the same developer for both phases? And then, in my experience, pulling a bond is not that easy, and it doesn't really go anywhere? I mean, I guess my question is, are there still homes and building permits and things in the development that's not responding?
Yes, that's another way.
I mean, I think, can we say, like, we're not going to issue any more building permits until this is addressed? Do something, because in my experience, pulling a bond is not an easy or quick...
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to look, I'd have to look at the issue about whether we could withhold any pending applications. However, with a company that obtains a lot of bonds, like Lennar or any of those, anytime we provide a formal notice to their bonding company, it essentially is a ding or a black mark on them, and they are, and it usually, especially on a maintenance bond, because it's not like a performance bond, maintenance bonds are considerably less, so they usually get, we usually are able to get some motivation out of them, because they do not like, they don't like their bonding companies receiving. And I would suggest that, if we do get to that point, that our office get involved, and we would contact the bonding company.
Yeah. I would just like to see, I just feel like they keep saying this over and over and over again, and like, what can we do to resolve this issue?
If I get asked, Mr. Edwards, what would be a reasonable amount of time? I think they've been on the clock for a while, let's put them on the clock.
We emailed them again last week, and I would say probably about another week or so, and I just want to say, I was not suggesting pulling the bond. I was suggesting making a phone call, which my experience has been, you know, they get nervous when that happens, so it's a motivating factor.
Okay.
Thank you. Brings us back to our first reading, introduction ordinance number 2021-65. Do we have any other discussion from council?
Motion approved.
Have motion from Councilmember Trace for approval. I'll make it a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Rasque?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Brings us to item number twelve, resolution number twenty twenty-one two sixty-six R.
Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two sixty-six R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, amending resolution number twenty twenty dash two fifteen R, which adopted the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget for the City of Saint Cloud, finding the city manager has certified there are prior year funds balances and/or current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs in various funds not included in the original twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional fundings and various funds making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Good evening, Council. Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. This is Budget Amendment Six, covering fiscal year twenty twenty-one. As has been tradition and expectation, at the end of the year, we true up all remaining accounts and general ledgers. And this is such at Budget Amendment Number Six, as noted per subject section two dash two twelve. These are the amendment, Budget Amendment Number Six to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. We began with the one percent with a net increase of zero. We increased revenues by seven hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight. This is in reference to the following capital projects that have been listed below that are being closed, and those excess funds being returned from the capital fund projects. Some of those are noted here, all beginning with Papa Romeo seventeen oh nine, eighteen oh fours, nineteen oh one, nineteen oh four, nineteen oh five. Their designations are listed there. First two digits of the project tell you the year with no activity or everything has been completed. Continuing on in the one percent, we have PR two thousand two and three, IT fifteen hundred and sixteen. We are decreasing previously budgeted prior year fund as they are not needed anymore with by balanced revenues for seven hundred and thirty-four thousand eight nine eight, causing your net increase of zero. Moving forward in the capital funds project, the zero increase, we're decreasing expenditures by one million seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight. This increase is the interfund transfers by the same amount of one million seven hundred and fifty-eight nine seventy-eight. This is for the copulation of thirteen projects being closed with fundings being returned to the original and all funding sources. Those include Fund One Twenty, which is the one percent, the Three Twenty Parks and Impact Fee, mobility fees at the Three Fifty Fund, and of course, the Six Forty Five CRA Fund. In the Parks and Impact Fee Fund, a net increase of zero, increase to the interfund transfers revenue. We're transferring over two thousand and a decrease in previously budgeted revenues in prior year fund balance by two thousand dollars. This funding, of course, is the return for the Fund Three Hundred for the capital projects for the closures of Papa Romeo seventeen oh three Hopkins Park bathrooms. In the Mobility Impact Fee Fund, zero net increase. You are increasing your interfund expenditures and decreasing contingency expenditures for two million five hundred thousand for the project Papa Whiskey seventeen oh four Turpike Exchange. In layman's term, what this means, as you call, the Road Impact Fee Fund is being closed down. And what took over was the Mobility Impact Fee Fund. So all we're doing is transferring two million five hundred dollars from the Road Impact Fee Fund, which will be closing, and Mobility Fund that took over in twenty seventeen. In your increase in interfund transfer revenues for four hundred and ninety-two four eight four, this is a decrease for budgeted revenues in prior year fund balance of the same amount of four ninety-two four eighty-four. This is to close project number Sierra Tango nineteen oh four, and that's the Seventeenth Street Sidewalk. Moving on, in the Water Fund, net increase of zero. This is an increase to repair and maintenance for expenditures in the amount of seventy-nine thousand seven two five. We're decreasing contingency in order to cover this expenditure of seventy-nine thousand seven two five, creating a net zero there for the additional funding and continued project of Whiskey Alpha twenty fifteen, that is Ice Peaking, also AKA inner. I just lost it. I just lost it. You know, the flush of water. I forgot. So, sorry about that. I just lost that. Sewer increase, zero net increase in salaries and expenditures for fifty-seven thousand three oh nine, and a decrease in contingency for the same amount. This is for additional funding needing for the Rios meter installs that are in Romeo Whiskey twenty-one oh one. And this is to complete such project, project number RW fourteen oh six, the reclaim affluent disposal. In the Stormwater, we continue on at ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty net increase. We're increasing revenue for the sale and recognition of fixed assets and increase in machinery and equipment by ninety-eight thousand seven fifty. We're recognizing the trade-in value of the twenty thirteen Vaccom sewer cleaner towards the purchase of a new budgeted model. In the Mortar Pool Fund, we have a twenty-five thousand net increase. This is for an increase to revenue for prior year fund balance. We're using that to increase expenditures to cover vehicle maintenance, also cleaning up work order clearing due to the increase in maintenance costs for the city fleet of vehicles. And as of unaudited fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we currently have a net increase of about twenty-five, excuse me, ninety thousand dollars in that funds, who are doing well from days before when we were deficit. The Self Insurance Medical Fund, a million dollar increase. This is for physical expenditures. We're decreasing contingency to cover these expenditures. This is due to the anticipated medical costs and claims during this fiscal year that we need to cover. Its cousin following itself, the Self Insurance Workers' Comp, at two thousand dollar, two hundred thousand dollars in increase. We are increasing prior year fund balance for the expenditures. These are also due to workers' comp claims that have been coming in higher during the fiscal year, and we need to cover. In the CRA, also known as the Community Redevelopment Agency, a net increase of zero. We're increasing the transfer fund revenue, decreasing prior year fund balance in three, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-one thousand five nine six. This is a closing project number Papa Romeo eighteen twelve. This is the Highway one ninety-two irrigation. And Charlie Romeo two thousand, this is the electric plant rehab. We're closing that down. Staff is a recommendation to approve resolution twenty twenty-one two sixty-six Romeo and are requesting approval from council for such approval as well for twenty twenty-one two sixty-six Romeo, and that is Budget Amendment Number Six for fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Not, we'll have discussion and our motion by council.
Did you want to speak?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Sir, were you wanting to speak?
Did you want to speak?
If you wanted to speak, you need to come to the.
Yeah. We'll get it. You got to come up.
Sir, you got to come to the. Sir. Sir.
I'm concerned a little bit about the increase in comp claims. What was the percentage of increase?
Speak to the council, and we'll, we'll take care of it.
Okay. I just want to know what the percentage of comp claims.
Thank you.
Were with the city that caused such an increase?
Thank you.
And Mayor, can we get him to state his name just under this item?
Could you state your name?
Oh, Terrence Slyman, five zero one three, White Ward Way, here in Saint Cloud.
Thank you, Mr. Slyman. Wendy?
Worker comp increase was forty-two point seven. This was related to some vehicle accidents that we had actually in previous year and are just catching up now. We had a multi-vehicle accident coming from an employee, multiple medical benefits, and also the pace and cash flow of the presentation of the claims. But forty-two point seven increase in a period of eight and a half months.
Thank you.
But I'd also like to point out that our modification rate is still less than one. It's point six seven. So we've reduced that significantly in the last five years.
That is correct.
It's one of those, you get good years, you get bad years.
Councilman Trace.
On the Hopkins Park, is that still a project that's going on, we're just kicking it to the next year, or does that money get shuffled somewhere else?
The, no, we closed that down and is getting shuffled and has gone already to reserves. Yes, sir.
So we did do the bathroom improvements, or we did not?
We, we did not, and we're re gonna reconfigure that, because we want to do a complete expansion there using potential ARP funds.
Okay, so do something bigger.
Yeah, we want to do something bigger, and, and we're still putting that list together for you guys, so we can come.
Okay, perfect. I just, I don't want to make sure we're putting more money into that park instead of just pulling it back in. All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
And I concur. Any other discussion from council? Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of this resolution?
Still moved.
Motion from Councilmember Matheny. Second from the mayor. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number thirteen. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash three oh six R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, in support of the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAFRA required, required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, under the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and authorizing the mayor to approve the report.
Good evening. Veronica Miller, Deputy City Manager. Every year, we, we are required to do a public hearing to go over our activities from the prior plan year. As you know, our Community Development Block Grant program is carried out through our annual action plans. Those annual action plans specifically say what concise summary of the actions, activities, and the specific federal and non-federal resources that we are going to use each year to address the priority needs and goals identified in the city's consolidated plan. And then we will report to the HUD on those accomplishments in the CAPR, which is what we are doing right now. So the CAPR is the Report on the Resources and the Investments, a report on the goals and the outcomes, a report on progress towards providing affordable housing, the demographic composition of individuals and families assisted, and citizen participation efforts. So this year, CDBG funds, we had available three hundred and seventy-eight thousand fifty-six dollars for the plan year. We expended two hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-six. We do not lose what we did not spend that will roll into this next year. And in response to the COVID relief, we received five hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-two, and we've expended two hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars. The goals for public services, public services, we were able to assist two hundred and four low to moderate income youth through the city's summer camp program. We were able to pay for the entire staff cost for the entire summer for both Hopkins Park and the main summer camp. And in addition to that, we were able to pay for all of the students to go on any in-house and off-site field trips. That included SeaWorld as the big off-site field trip. For employment, we were able to create and retain thirteen jobs. We have not made progress yet with the homeownership, housing construction, and housing rehab. However, we are currently discussing how we're going to work on that, and so hopefully you'll, you'll see progress on that in next year's plan year report. The demographics, to assist the two hundred and seventeen people, we had a hundred and seventy-two, seventy-nine percent that were white. Nineteen were black, African American. They were, that was nine percent. Twenty-six were other multiracial, twelve percent, and one was Hispanic. So we've given citizens two opportunities. We have posted that we were accepting comments on this between November fourth and November eighteenth today. We also said we were going to be having this current public hearing right now. I have no idea if anybody is here, if so, I'm glad they stayed to the end. If not, you will see that they had the opportunity to send written comments to Erin Burnett. The draft CAPR was also online and available in our office. We did not receive any comments. So assuming that we receive approval this evening, we will go ahead and submit the report into HUD software. It's not due until December twenty-eighth, so we're quite excited that we'll be able to, to accomplish that early. Staff recommends approval.
Is there any one in the audience that would like to comment on this item? Not, we'll have discussion and our motion by council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have most from Councilmember Askew, second, Councilmember Matheny.
I have a comment.
And we'll receive a comment at this time from Mr. Trace.
So, I think it was yesterday. It's been a long day. Yesterday, I believe three of us were at the same event for fundraising, event for Boys and Girls Club that's hopefully starting up over across the street from Canary Park. I don't know when we talk about kind of some of the funding mechanisms or other strategies for our CDBG funds, but I think that would be a great thing for us to at least try to help kick off the, the funding of that Boys and Girls Club. So, I mean, it's not for this item in particular, I just want to kind of bring it up and get council's feedback or thoughts on trying to.
May I address how I've already worked on that? With the city manager's assistance, I did reach out to Ms. Ketchum, who seems to be the leader on, on that initiative, and explained to her that, that it is currently eligible. It's currently an allowed expense. It wouldn't even require us to modify our plan, as, as far as I'm aware. And I know that they're looking for funding, a funding commitment early on, and that we cannot do. So we can help pay for expenses, but we can't pay, do a funding commitment. So I asked for her to reach out to her contacts. She said she was going to talk to their CFO. I told her, you know, I actually had a timeline. I, I need to send, spend certain amounts of money quickly, so the sooner I could hear back, the better. Haven't heard anything back, so I'm assuming it's because they're really just at the commitment stage versus having any expenses. You know, if, if they needed to renovate that building, things like that, we would potentially be able to help quickly.
Thank you.
Will there be a consensus on, on helping with the Boys and Girls Club?
Sure.
Sure. Mr. Start.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We'll add strategic planning also, and again, we have some different ideas on how we can fund that, different mechanisms.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to council action, item number one.
Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two forty-six R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, amending legal notice and advertising procedures for public hearings before the Board of Adjustments, Planning Commission, and City Council.
Good evening. Veronica Miller, Deputy City Manager. We have a ordinance in our Land Development Code that outlines that we do our mailing requirements, procedures as adopted by resolution approved by the City Council. Recently, the City Council gave staff direction to work on expanding our public notification requirements. So we have done research on this and are coming back with a drafted resolution and would like to discuss the item with you further. So currently, any public hearings that go to the City Council, the Planning Commission, or the Board of Adjustment all follow the same process. They, so that would basically mean, you know, our future land use amendment, zoning, conditional uses, Board of Adjustment variances. I'm sure I'm not listing some. So currently, we are sending mailers to everyone within a three-hundred-foot buffer of the subject property. We are sending those to both the owner and the tenant. We're posting a sign on the property, and we're doing a legal advertisement in the newspaper, which is not required by state statute currently. We could be doing those online, but recently, the City Council chose that you wanted us to continue doing those in the newspaper. So when the conversation came up, it came up during the Drew Liner Road case. So we went ahead and used that for our exhibits to, to show you what that would have looked like. So the property that has a black and white hash, hatch mark around it was the subject property that we were discussing that night. The blue is the current three-hundred-foot buffer that we are currently using. Green would be expanding it to five hundred feet. And so we also did one to show what a thousand feet would look like, and red is the thousand-foot buffer. During the conversation, there was also talk about if the buffer touched a subdivision, that we should notify everyone within that subdivision. So using that specific property, again, here is what that would have looked like. There's the, on the left is the three-hundred-foot, which is our. which is our current standard for those mailings. And then, you can see the additional options. Just to point out, staff has to do these mailings themselves, and they are time-consuming. So, public notice buffers are obviously a strategic plan goal to provide a high level of service to our internal and external customers as part of public service and for growth management. Because we are consistent with Osceola County and the City of Kissimmee, we actually do more than Osceola County and the City of Kissimmee because we send it to the owners and to the tenants. Staff recommends that no action be taken. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion or motion by council. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So, this is my item that I brought forward. And really, my conversation about this is not when you're next to a subdivision with forty-five-foot-wide lots. It's more when you're out more, like, the property to the north of your example there, you know, you've got this big parcel of land. And so, really, one property owner gets notified. So, when you're out in these bigger parcels is really when I'm talking about it more, is that three-hundred feet doesn't make sense when you're out and there's big tracts of land surrounding you. So, I don't know if there's a hybrid way that's like, I mean, just using some common sense when you look at it, like, there's a large tract of land, we're only notifying one property owner. Maybe we need to expand our boundaries is really more what I was talking about. So, and then, how do you measure it? Do you, do you take the property line and offset it three-hundred feet?
It's within our Esri software. They create a three-hundred-foot buffer, and it grows from the property line itself.
Right. So, it's the property line. It's not like you stick a point in the center of it. So, you take the property line. So, that's really where my comment stemmed from, is when you have large tracts of land around you, and we're only notifying a handful of people. That's, so. Yeah, I'm done.
Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. So, this instance in particular, what signs do they have to put on the property? Or is that a requirement as well?
They have to put one sign on the property.
One sign.
So, in that specific instance, I, I think, so, back in the day, staff used to be the one to go put the sign out. Now, we provide the sign to the applicant, and they go put the sign out, they take pictures, and they sign an affidavit that they have put the sign there. So, the affidavit and the pictures are helpful because people all the time say that there was no sign there. Because we can't help it once the sign goes up that sometimes, sometimes they may be hit, they may be removed by someone mowing the lawn. They disappear.
Yeah, because this is one of those instances where no one from either neighborhood adjacent to this would ever drive by there to see the sign. So, like, they just wouldn't know. But granted, they have streets that stub out to this property, so they hypothetically would know eventually that we'll go somewhere and connect to something else. So, I didn't know if there was a way we could have a few more of those signs or just, it's hard to codify some of this, like, oh, it would make sense to just put a sign here and here. But, you know, I don't know how we add some of that. Or, I thought the county noticed HOAs within a mile or something like that. I thought they had a different notice. They don't do that?
I'm not sure. But I know this is a problem. And so, like, the staff recommendation not to change it, I don't agree with because it's the same problem happens at the county where when you have large tracts of land, like, only like one person gets notified, which I don't think is right. And, you know, to your point, are they actually driving past where the sign is? And like, I know, like, I've been driving, and I'll see a sign, but you're driving, you know, fifty-five miles an hour, and the sign's like this big, and you're like, what was that sign back there? You know?
Yeah. Gutters. Add gutters here.
Yeah. So, I mean, I would like to see if we could expand it. I don't know if there's a way to write it that y'all feel comfortable with. But, you know, like, you have to notify at least X number of people on either side of the property, like, so you could, you know, do it that way. But I don't think we need to get into a thousand square feet when you're, you know, if that creates notifying, you know, five thousand people. But I think it needs to be a reasonable amount.
I would just, if I could, I'd just point out to you, and I understand what you're trying to get at, but it's difficult from a staff perspective to basically try to codify a notice provision when we're trying to deal with a unique situation or maybe.
It's not unique, though. Like, the same thing happened to us over there on Live Oak Estates. It's like that not many people got notified just because the lots are big. So, only a few homes along the edge got notified because the lots were so deep. You know, it's just.
Well, and I.
I mean, so then, I'll just say, then, I'll just say, extend it to five hundred feet, then. And can you put the requirement onto the developer? Like, why does staff have to process it?
So, that was something that we researched in the past, you know, and there, we have never come up with an effective, efficient way that, to pass that responsibility onto, if there's another city that does a good job, I'm sure we would love that. But if I also could point out our concern about five hundred feet, too. Staff's very concerned that, you know, sometimes we're adjacent. Actually, it was five hundred feet plus the subdivision. That was what the concern was. I'm sorry, I take that back.
But I will point, historically, there, as I recall, staff used to rely on the developers to do the notice years ago. And we did, we start receiving a lot of complaints that the notices weren't being, weren't being received. And I think that's why staff took it back, to basically do it internally, to make sure it was getting done.
Could you have the developer create the mailer and the envelope and the stamps and everything, and deliver it to the city with like a list and say, and then the city could just drop it in the mail?
We could try it.
I mean, I'm just trying to help you guys out. If there's, I would put the burden on them to say, give me a spreadsheet, and you guys print it all up and put postage on it and deliver it to us, and then we'll check it off, check it off the box.
Mr. Anderson was saying we can give them the spreadsheet, which is the names.
Right. And that's where it used to be. The spreadsheet would be provided, I believe, by the city, and then the applicant would be, would be the one that would do the actual mailings.
I think, I think if I remember when we were trying that previously, it, it was one, I think nobody would believe when the developer said they mailed them. Where if staff said, we did it, then there was more credibility that the mailers went out.
Aren't you saying that they create it, and then they bring it to you? You guys can check it and then drop it in the mail?
Just throw it in the mail, yeah.
Councilmember Trace?
So, sometimes when I get mail that is just in a white envelope, even if it looks official-ish, because everyone tries to make it look more official than it really is, it gets torn in half before I even look at it. And I kind of like look inside, see, oh, a credit card offer, and throw it away. Is it possible to just do a postcard? And that would save time and effort with, so, it's on there, there's a map, like this little map or something of the thing, and say, rezone, here's the date of P and Z, here's the date of the commission meeting. Simple, just, we can print it out, stamp it, and.
Scan code on it.
Yeah, Q R K or something.
I got an idea. Can staff provide the spreadsheet to Cunningham's or Creative Printing, and then the developer pays the bill, and then it gets sent out?
I think the issue.
And they do like a postcard?
I think the issue with that, when we tried that, was the timeline. Trying, trying to get things done within a certain time because we have strict, so, part of this is we must send the mail within a certain day. So, if they miss the deadline, then we had further issues because we've already advertised in the newspaper and some of those other. But I, but I like that, because that was one of the things we had talked about a long time ago. Postcard, we can try to see if we can.
Make it fit?
Make it fit. Trust me, no one likes doing these. So, any way we can make it easier, you know?
We don't, we don't need workers' comp claims for paper cuts. So, we'll try to make it simple.
It seems like you could reach out to like Creative Printing or something and say, if we get you guys doing this, you're going to have to turn it around, commit to turn it around in whatever the timeline is. Two days or, I mean, I don't know. It seems like there's a solution to this.
Yeah.
Mrs. Sturgeon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in favor of the postcard and giving it back to the developer. I think that might be the best way to go. If we could do some kind of pilot and see how that works for, you know, a period of time. I just, you know, staff right now is working so many cases, and if we can give it back. My only concern is the verification process. But if they did the postcard, or we used a third party to do that, I think that's going to be more efficient. And then, hold the developer accountable for those notifications.
I thought Dwight did the signs anyway. Remember him talking about the stakes cost him double now and talking about that? So, I mean, is that something? Yeah, if we could talk to him about the postcard thing, and if he direct mails it out, and we just go in for it.
And a postcard doesn't need to be this big. He can make it whatever size you want.
Well, we can, we can investigate it again. Do you want us to report back to you? Or do you want us to?
I want the five hundred feet, and I guess y'all figure out the means and methods.
Well, I think, why don't, I think that's what you, I think if your directions, move the five hundred feet and see what we can do from internally, make it more efficient. I will tell you that most of the discussion we hear in the legal community is that the mail notice is the most, is the least effective of all notice out there. People just don't read their mail anymore.
And that's why I think a postcard that just, oh, wait, that's the property right next to my house. The cows will go away.
Right, or.
It's called cow TV.
Cow TV? Oh, okay.
But I think there's a lot of good ideas that we can probably work on internally. So, you go to, so.
So, can we just?
Do you need a motion?
Throw that back at you to work on that?
Well, I think what you want, if the council's intent is to change the current three-hundred feet to five-hundred feet, we need a motion as part of the approval of this item to do that.
I'll make a motion to increase the distance to five hundred feet.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so that's approving resolution twenty-one two four six R with the five-hundred-foot.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Can, can, can the effective date be when we implement the postcard? Or give me a little bit of time to work on the postcard scenario?
January one. How about that?
So, all new notices after January one, I guess?
Yeah.
Is that?
Does that give me enough time?
Well, I think we'd have to do it based on applications received before.
Okay.
You have to do based on when we receive an application.
After January one, five hundred feet, we're looking at doing the postcard. Is that all the direction you guys need?
Are we giving it to the developer?
I, I think, I mean, the thing we talked about is go to a print company and work out a.
Third party.
A third party.
Okay.
Have the developer be responsible for it.
For the cost.
For the cost, right.
A local printer or something? I forgot.
Sweet.
Applications after January one, that, that's, that's, we can, we can implement by then, for sure.
That'd be part of the motion, Dean?
Yeah, I think that's, should be part of the motion. So, it'll apply only to the applications received by staff after January first.
Per Dan's amendment to my motion.
Okay. I can't amend your motion.
So, the motion is five hundred feet and only applicable to applications after January first. Correct?
Yes.
Second.
And so, we have a second from Councilmember Trace. And we're clear on the motion. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
I overlook tonight.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number two.
Sorry. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two ninety-three. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, approving a water and wastewater agreement from Clayton Properties Group, Inc., for Sienna Reserve Phase Three, a residential development located in the unincorporated area of Osceola County to the north of Jones Road, south of Jack Brack Road, east of Narcousie Road, and west of Outback Road, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director. And you can see that the property is bounded by the yellow here. And, and here, it's bounded by the blue. And so, and the city limits is bounded by the yellow. So, it's pretty far away from the city limits. And so, we did revise our water and wastewater agreement items that are listed in the agreement to more of a checklist format. And so, anything that is in the agreement will have a check. And if it's not in the agreement, it'll have an X. So, in this case, all the possible items that could be in the agreement are in the agreement for both of these items, the next two items. And so, there will be checks for all of them. So, each single-family residence will be a minimum of fifteen hundred square feet. Air-conditioned living space, the crosswalks with eighty-eight proved surfaces are required at all intersections in all directions where a sidewalk is present. Minimum of two trees will be required per lot. For required tree, street trees within a lot boundary, that tree will count towards a tree minimum. And each single-family residence will have four and one-half parking spaces with a minimum of two in the garage and two in the driveway. Remaining parking is in on-street and public amenity areas. Then, garage setbacks will be a minimum of twenty-five feet to ensure adequate parking depths on driveways. And HOA documents will prohibit on-street parking except in designated parking spaces or areas. And air conditioner pads and condensing units will be installed with a minimum of ten feet stagger for drainage and accessibility. And architectural elevations of the sods of homes shall vary from adjacent homes. So, as you know, this is outside the city limits. So, water and wastewater agreement is required, and staff recommends approval of this agreement. And the reuse clause that talks about the, only the amount of reuse will be provided that is equal to the amount of wastewater that they provide to the city is in the agreement as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Is the applicant here? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Not, we'll have discussion or motion by council?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, motion of Councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings item number three.
Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two ninety-four R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, approving a water and wastewater agreement from Park Square Homes for a ninety-one-unit residential development named Wiregrass Phase Five, townhomes located in the unincorporated area of Osceola County on the south side of Jack Brack Road, north of Jones Road, east of Narcousie Road, and west of McMichael Road, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director, again. As before, the development is right here. It is a, outside the city limits. Nine point two, two-eight acres, ninety-one residential units. And the next slide shows you that it's pretty far from the city limits, so it's not even close to annexation time. And I know you'll be so delighted that I'm not going to read each one of these items because you know they're going to be the same as the ones in the last presentation. And they are all checked. You can read along at home. And staff, since this is outside the city limits, staff recommends approval of this capacity is available for this project.
Thank you. Would there be an applicant here to speak to this? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Do I have a discussion, motion by council? Councilmember Matheny.
Marjorie, this one has the restriction on the reuse as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And this one also has the reuse restriction.
Thank you. I make a motion for the adoption of a count, resolution number 2021-294R. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilmember Askew, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Deputy Mary Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number four.
Discussion and possible action regarding the request for a reduction of lien for code enforcement case 2018-2014. The property address is, for this case, is located at 111212th Street, St. Cloud, Florida.
Mrs. Sturgeon.
Thank you, Mayor. As of the code enforcement hearing date, the property accrued fines of $234,972.48, including administrative costs, which is stopped accruing pending the determination of the city council. The reductions are negotiated on the cost of the fines, only, only and not the administrative fees, which are $228.48. The recommendation of the magistrate is a reduction to $22,897.48 to be paid within 30 days of the council meeting and the property must be demolished within 120 days of meeting the date pending council's decision on this item.
Thank you. Is the applicant wanting to speak to this? Will there be any public comment?
Hi, my name is Eddie Pan. This is the first time attending a council meeting like this and the discovery is, it's been a long night.
What is your address?
I'm co-owner of the address of 111212th Street.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And like a city manager suggests that there's a deal, like, actually, we didn't know that there is a penalty, like a fine of violating the code until we tried to sell the property lately. And because of the, due to the misunderstanding of the, the order of, by the magistrate. And the order saying that by certain date, we need to apply all the necessary permit. So I, we hire a general contractor to do this job. And he did. And we pay him and also pay the architects to try to do the job and try to remodel. So at that point, we thought, we thought we already met the code. Saying we didn't know that, so anyway, so it started accumulating to that over $200,000. So that doesn't, doesn't make any sense to, to, to anyone. That's even way higher than the value of the property itself. So, so, so we tried to make a deal with the city and to meet the code. At the same time, we paid a penalty and then demolished and then to see if the council can approve this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trace.
Thank you. And is this, because we've had some of these and we don't really get a lot of background in the item that we get, but is this one of those that it's just an, an issue that was a long time ago and it just kept on racking up? Or is this continual issues and police, law enforcement issues and?
Well, there haven't been any police or law enforcement issues related to this project, but it is property, but it is a continuing issue and that's why part of this is destruction needs to be demolished. So it currently isn't in compliance. It's been an ongoing code enforcement action for a while. So we understand from the, it's my understanding that there's a potential transaction in place. I think Mr. Pan mentioned that they were trying to, or they were trying to sell it and that there's going to be a new owner that's going to take control of the property and demolish it and I guess maybe rebuild a new structure on it.
Okay, and there, it looks like there's some neighboring properties owned by the same group. Are there code enforcement issues on those properties as well?
On some, I believe there are on some other ones, but obviously those aren't in front of you today.
Is that something we can help solve all at once or?
I think they've already cured some of those violations.
They've already, so, okay, so there were some other cases and so I think those, as Claudia's pointed out, some of those violations have been corrected or they have been corrected. As far as I know, this is the only outstanding lien violation for this particular respondent.
Okay, thank you.
You have a discussion? Could I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Askew. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Deputy Mary Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Number five.
Discussion and possible action regarding an appointment to a vacancy on the planning
Ivy?
This is an at large, an at-large appointment for alternate suit, alternate seat two, which is vacant, and we have one applicant, which is Phil Lantry. So any other council members can make that appointment.
And he's still here. He's qualified. Sit up all night. I'd make a motion for Phil Lantry.
Second.
We have a motion for Philip Lantry and a second from, a motion from the, Mr. Askew and Councilmember Matheny have made a second. Any other discussion or motion? Can we just vote an a on this? We gotta.
You'll have to do a roll.
All right, do a roll call.
Deputy Mary Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Well, we're finally here, Mr. Attorney.
I have about one item. As the council is aware, the city has been, and the, and the council members have been named as defendants in a lawsuit filed by Waste Connections related to the ongoing issue and the disposal of leach aid into the city's treatment facility. There's a couple of times when the city council can meet in closed session. One of them is when you have been, when the city is involved in ongoing litigation to discuss litigation expense moving forward and possible settlement of items. So the law requires us to, if we're going to have a closed litigation session like that, to announce it at a earlier meeting and then have it at a subsequent meeting. So that's what I would like to do tonight. We would like to have essentially a closed breakout section as part of your December 9 council meeting so that we can fully inform a view of the status regarding the litigation and discuss the future expense associated and possible settlement options. So that's what I'm doing tonight. We would, tonight, just by, by the law, I just have to notify you. Court reporter will be present at the meeting and we'll break out of your regular scheduled council meeting to have a, a meeting. I'll be present, Mr. Sturgeon will be present, as well as the city's independent, their outside legal counsel that's representing the city on this.
Does that mean after the meeting? What does breakout?
Typically, we, typically, we do it as part of the, I mean, the meeting, you have to call the regular meeting into session, then we will handle some items. We'll decide with the city manager what part of the agenda we want to put out, then the meeting would adjourn or at least recess for us to break out into a separate, and then we'll come back to the meeting. So depending on the agenda and what the agenda looks like for December 9, we'll try to do it as conveniently as possible for everybody involved.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sturgeon.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few items. First off, in front of you, I, I gave you a memo concerning, you gave me the authority several meetings ago to add positions to the staffing chart and I provided that memo. In the future, it'll be in the report and information section. It's got, shows what fund it comes out of and the reason we did it, so you have explanation. The second thing is, I'd like to let you know and applaud to announce that I've appointed Melissa Dunklin as the Community Development Director. Mr. David Bridle has joined us as our business navigator. In addition to that, Suzette Cover is our city comptroller. She, today I just learned that she passed her certified government finance officer certification testing process. The last thing I have is during the city manager's evaluation, we spoke of hiring an administrative assistant to support the city council. Because of the ordinance that the authority gave me, it is not a budgeted item, so we can do it two ways. One, a budget amendment, or you have professional services that we put in your budget and I told you I would not transfer that money or spend it unless I spoke to the council as a whole. So that would be my recommendation if you want to move forward with that, is to just transfer that money for the position to support city council.
Can you circulate a job description or what extra has to happen? Or then budget amount and all that?
I will do that.
And cost. Because I'm, I'm iffy on do, do we actually need a whole extra staff person just to manage some of our stuff?
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. You don't need anything else to muscle on that then?
No, sir.
Councilmember Trace.
And Bill brought up during one of the items, but the Nova Road 1I2, track the signal. Is that something through DOT, are we able to fund the design ourselves to help spearhead that or how do we accelerate?
My proposal is, and I've spoken to, through, through Rep. Hawkins' office, Rocky has a contact and we called and, and they're interested in talking to us. I thought we could do kind of the same process we did with Canoe Creek. We were loaning the money and then when they finished the project, they pay us back. And they said that could save up to a year. So if, if you want to move forward to that, like I said, we're, we're working with FDOT, we're building those relationships and we have a meeting with them, I think, in two weeks to talk about the 192 corridor pedestrian issues and then the 190, and the Nova Road signalization and any other issues they want to bring up.
Drainage.
Drainage, we haven't forgot, yes, ma'am. We, we are pushing on that too.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Matheny.
Well, I guess I mentioned the monthly market is really fantastic. If you haven't gone, it's really busy and great. And I was going to thank Stephanie, but it looks like she snuck out for the new lights. We got, finally got the new lights up on New York, you know, because we were, had a hodgepodge of missing bulbs and bulbs out and blue bulbs and, you know, so now we've got nice, if you take a look at it, we've got nice bulbs out there and happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yes, thank you, that's true.
Councilmember Askew.
City manager and I spoke a little bit about, and I think some other council got it as well, is like when we have challenges on the weekend, trash overflowing, garbage cans aren't getting picked up, things like that. What's the way that our citizens can reach out? I mean, they're reaching out to us on the weekend, but, so Bill talked about something about a 311, some different ways of doing that and I don't know if you can explain it better than?
Well, I think one of the first things is we will make sure that after hours number is clearly on our website and we'll do a marketing campaign on that. But there's also the opportunity also to do 311. And my thought on that would, during the day, it'll be monitored here at City Hall with our operators and then at night it would transfer over to our communications center. So they'd have one contact number. We, when we do that, we just need to make sure we have the structures in place to handle the issue. I don't want somebody to call there and leave a message and two weeks later somebody calls them back. So we're going to have to make sure we really put protocols in place that they get a response right away, that they're going to hear a voice, not a voice activated voice.
Right. Is it something you can look at and then come back?
Yes, absolutely.
And the other part, monthly market, I'm going to thank some of the business owners that really run it with internet and the, the city staff and that's Z N Q, Stephanie and Adam from 10th Street Produce. Without those two and a couple other folks down there, the whole thing wouldn't happen. So they are the driving force behind it, so I really appreciate what they're doing. And happy birthday to Khan. I don't know if he knew that. And he helps out a lot with the monthly market. He helps assist in the safety part of it and he's very flexible and moves things around. So I appreciate his, his help. That's it.
Councilman Urban.
Just a couple of things. First of all, Mr. Sturgeon, can we get an update on the water in our next meeting?
Absolutely, we'll do that. I'll have utilities do that for the council.
Appreciate that. And also I just want to reiterate how honored I am to be able to serve in this position, serve with the city council and the staff in place and the residents of St. Cloud for trusting me to, to be in this position here on the city council and look forward to serving you over the next few years. And I hope everybody has a very happy Thanksgiving. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all of our city staff for the amazing support they gave in the farm share food distribution that took place out at Cornerstone Church. The city staff were just amazing, hard workers. We gave out food to over 280 vehicles that came through until we finally just ran out. We did have some, a few little things left over and we took those over to the transition house and they were very, very grateful. Aaron Jinks and the staff just does a marvelous job. The police department, the fire department was there, just a lot of city staff and thank them very much for their support. I'd like to thank the city manager and Stephanie Holcamp for helping me. We visited Hopkins Park and appreciate Mr. Trace's comments. It really needs a facelift or something.
Expansion.
Expansion, whatever, and so just kind of keep that on your priority list because I, it, it really needs some help. And so I appreciate that. Also, I'd like to wish everybody certainly a blessed Thanksgiving. That brings us to our information and reports section. Thursday and Friday, November 25th, 26th, city offices will be closed in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. Friday, December 3, there will be a trial, tree lighting ceremony here at City Hall, right out front at 6:00 PM. Saturday, December 4, there will be a Christmas parade here in downtown. I understand that we have over 100 participants have already registered for floats thus far, so it's a great double what we had last year. So things are kind of getting back to normal, thank goodness.